Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the April 25th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on May 3rd, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. Please note that the Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. They look like this. They're located at the back of the room. If you wish to speak on an item and you're neither the agent nor the applicant, I'd ask that you fill one of those out. Helps keep me organized and make sure that everyone gets called upon for their specific items. With that, we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. We'll start with roll call. Note that everyone is here, less Jim. And welcome to our newest Planning Commission member, Kevin Keen. Thank you. Ron is here from the board. First item of the agenda is approval of the April 11th, 2022 minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? I would note the one where I was not in attendance. So the chairman for that meeting was Charlie, yeah? Any other changes or corrections? If none, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second for approval. Further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda consists of the consent agenda, items three and four, followed by regular commission items five through 15, and 16 through 20 are our normal end of meeting items. Are there any changes to today's agenda? Noting none. Welcome to motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for approval of today's agenda. Further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1627 for Jean and Carolyn Vanderwerth to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district. And staff is recommending to end conditional use permit CU 1627 with the applicant's concurrence. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1901 for Hayden Fuchs to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district. And staff recommends to end conditional use permit CU 1901.
Thank you. Does staff want any items pulled from the agenda?
No, not at this time.
Does anyone on the board membership here want any items moved from the agenda? For those folks in the audience that are new to this process, items three and four on today's agenda are on the consent agenda. Those two items will be voted on at the same time. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on either of those items? Items three, items four. Noting none, staff's recommendation is for approval of today's consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second for approval. Further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item five.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madison Ransom, Environmental Planner. Agenda item number five is conditional use permit CU 2214 to allow storage units on the subject property. The applicant is 413 LLC. The location is located east of Highway 79, approximately 2.4 miles south of the intersection of Highway 79 and Old Folsom Road. The lot size is 22.93 acres. It's currently zoned commercial district. Access is off of South Highway 79 and section line between Section 32 and Section 4. There is no flood hazard, special flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of the conditional use permit applications. I will read the findings, and they are up on the screen. Number one, no, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, no, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. The surrounding zoning is commercial, heavy industrial, and agricultural districts. Number three, no, the requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Or yes, the section line off of Highway 79 will have to be improved to ordinance 14 standards for a local collector street in a commercial district. Five, yes, access is off of Highway 79 via an existing gravelled section line. The requested use should not significantly affect the traffic congestion. Six, yes, the property is zoned commercial district. Storage units on the property is allowed with an approved conditional use permit. And seven, yes, the future land use of the subject property is commercial district. Allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Currently, the property has no building permits and is vacant and does not have an onsite wastewater treatment system. The request was routed for interdepartmental review. County Highway commented, road must be improved to design standards listed in subdivision regulations, Table 1, desired status for general commercial zone. Staff has addressed this as a condition of approval. Rapid City Planning commented, the city's major street plan identifies a proposed collector going through the southern portion of the property, requiring a 78-foot right-of-way with 200 feet of highway property running, excuse me, with 200 feet of Highway 79 and 68 feet of the way thereafter. Ensures that specs will meet future right-of-way dedication. The future land use plan designates the property as agriculture along an entrance corridor. Staff has addressed this as a condition of approval. Black Hills Electric Cooperative, all poles must be accessible to utility trucks and clearance from building to lines must meet or exceed national electrical safety codes. Staff has also addressed this as a condition of approval. The applicant is applying for the total capacity of 21 indoor storage buildings, each holding 27 units, and an outdoor 331-foot by 694-foot open gravel storage area. The applicant's proposal indicates the property will be fenced with no office or onsite management, and this will be managed off-site. The applicant will need to improve the section line right-of-way and name the road. Staff has not received any complaints regarding this requested use. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 2214 with the following conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just some clerical ones. I just had on number eight, I didn't totally understand it, that a minimum four parking spaces be provided and a loading and unloading zone be provided for all storage units that run along the units. I didn't totally understand that. And then on number 10, I think you mean any, that any on-premise signs, there's just a typo.
I'll fix that.
And then on 14, I think it didn't all get in there. At the very end, it stops. And now, I gotta pick on you a little on, just an understanding on seven. You've got that 21 storage building to be allowed on the subject property, not to exceed 320 by 335 feet. First time I read that, I said, is that the property size? So, but if you move the three, not to exceed, or you write tree, that 21-story building is common, not to exceed 320 by 35 feet, be allowed on the subject property. It was a little confusing to me, but that number 14, I think, is important, it isn't all there. Other than that, I haven't got any problems. Just all clerical, you know me. Thank you.
Further questions on item four, on item five, excuse me? So, do you want to address the, is item number, item number 10, the property?
Item number 10 should read that any on-premise signs.
Okay, excuse me, item number seven. So what are you, what are you suggesting the wording be, Charlie?
Oh, I was just saying that 21-story buildings count, not to exceed 320 by 35 feet, comma, be allowed on the subject property. If reading the other way, it sounds like that's the size of the property to me, and I got lost, and I had to go back and look, and I saw the size of these buildings, they're big. So, I realized she was talking about the size of the 21 buildings.
Okay. But we have a picture of what was requested as part of this agenda item, so I think that it's clear.
Okay.
Okay.
Don't have any problem.
How about number 14?
I guess I don't understand the confusion with number 14.
It ends with the word and with a comma.
There is another condition on the next page, 15.
So, the intent is that you went all the way to 14, and then you put the semicolon and, and then the intent is that 15. But normally, each condition ends with either a semicolon or a period, but in this instance, you did, the semicolon and comma means and 15.
There's one more, yes.
Okay, I understand.
Got it.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
The gravel pad, are there any restrictions on what can be stored there?
Not identified in the conditional use permit, no.
Further questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I would move to approve.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion in second for approval. Further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Agenda item number six is vacation of right-of-way VR 22-01 to vacate 430 feet of public right-of-way on Pretty Flower Lane, adjacent to Lot A of Lot 1 and Lot B of Lot 1 of Battle Creek Mountain Estates. The applicant owner is Karen Fonseca. The agent is DC Scott Surveyors. Location is 24355 Pretty Flower Lane. It's currently zoned rural residential district. Access is off Pretty Flower Lane, and there's no special flood hazard on the property. Existing conditions, or excuse me, interdepartmental review. Registered needs commented, Exhibit A needs to read in Lots A and Lots A and B of Lot 1 of Battle Creek Mountain Estates subdivision. Staff has addressed this as a condition of approval. And County Highway Department commented, a new turnaround must be established in accordance to Figure 1 of subdivision regulations. This was a condition of approval for the layout plan 2206. This portion of plotted right-of-way does not connect with any existing or future right-of-way alignments. The lots affected by the vacation of right-of-way have other legal access. The underlying property of the public right-of-way being vacated was never transferred from the original owner to the existing owner. Therefore, it needs to be transferred to the existing owner, or the original owner needs to sign the plan. This will be addressed in the conditions of approval for the minor plan. Exhibit A was originally emailed into the planning department, therefore, an original copy is required. Staff finds no significant issue with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing and future land use in the area. Therefore, staff recommends approval of vacation of right-of-way with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Just one, can you show me what the access was gonna be? I think it'd be Lot A. I'm looking on the picture, the overhead picture from Rapid. Was the, I didn't understand where that access and whether that could be them future subdivided. That was why my question for the access.
So Lot A and B is that top highlighted portion. It was plotted together before, and it is actually in the process of being plotted, a lot line adjustment currently, which will show access. I guess I should have put a picture on there to show that I can pull it up.
Okay. Because my thought was down the road, they certainly, another property owner or this property owner could ask to subdivide, and I don't understand where the access would be if we vacate this.
They'd have to put it back.
They would?
Well, if, if, if you're, right now, it was plotted as Lot A and Lot B, and the proposed right-of-way was there to provide access through Lot B to Lot A. And now they're saying they're gonna combine those lots and get rid of the, and get rid of the access, because the access terminates on the new lot. Lot 1.
I would concur, except that it says in here they don't own that. So they wouldn't have an ability to put it back, would they?
When they vacate, when that property gets vacated, I'm assuming it reverts back to the property owner.
It over, back to the original property owner that plotted that right-of-way.
Yeah.
And so they will either have to sign it over to the current plan owner, or sign the plan once it is put through the final plan, and the minder's created, and it's approved.
Run that by me again, Ransom.
So, when it was originally created as a public right-of-way.
They don't own it, right?
Yeah.
Is that where we're starting, they don't own it?
The current owner does not own that portion of.
Thank you.
Property underneath the public right-of-way.
And then, if this is approved, you were saying, what would happen from there?
Either it will have to be the current, or the old, still current owner that owns that public right-of-way underneath will either have to sign the plan, or give it over to the current owner.
So then they would own it to follow up with what Rhett you said?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, so now I have a question, because as it sits, now they're vacating the right-of-way, and if they would not own that right-of-way when it's done, what is the legal access for Lot A, or for the revised lot then?
Right.
Because it comes to a point, there's no gap width.
So currently, that lot is plotted the way it sits.
Yep.
On that picture, and so they would still have access through Pretty Flower Lane, it would just end.
No, but Pretty Flower Lane would end on the vacated right-of-way, which they wouldn't own.
Cozy Stack Environmental Planner, so they wouldn't be able to continue with their plot, to plot those together until the lands transferred?
Approved ownership?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just didn't understand.
No, I wanted to understand the sequence of things there, so it didn't get stalled. Further questions for staff?
Then do I understand that based on that, then they'd have the right to report it in there if they wanted to subdivide again? It's what you're saying?
They'd have to come back and ask for it to be inserted back.
Just so we're all on the same page, because right now, it didn't look to me like if they went down the road, they'd have that access.
Yeah, no, that was a good question, Charlie. I was, it was my assumption that they, they were the ones that planted it, now they wanted to take it away. So if that was a different group, then, good point. Thank you. Further questions for staff? I don't have any speaker request forms on this. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of vacation of right-of-way VR 22-01 with three conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is so moved?
Oh, there's a motion. You second?
Second.
Motion in second, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item seven.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor again. Item seven is comprehensive plan amendment CA 22-07 to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from rural residential district to low-density residential district. The applicant is Jack and Marie Zimer. The agent is All Aspects Inc. The property is located at 12525 Jack's Court, approximately 0.22 miles southwest of the intersection of Inowas Mountain Road and Pactola Drive. It currently contains approximately 2.5 acres. It is currently zoned agriculture district, and access is off of Pactola Drive and Jack's Court. There is no special flood hazard area on the subject property. So when considering the criteria, we look at the surrounding zoning districts. There is suburban residential district to the south of this property, which allows smaller lot sizes than what is being requested. One of the lots, Lot 8, does contain a single-family residence with an onsite wastewater treatment system, a detached garage, and a shed. The purpose of this rezone is in order for them, to allow them to plot these lots together. This was routed around through the interdepartmental review. There was no objections or concerns received. The future land use in the area identifies several parcels, a suburban residential district within one-half mile of the subject property, which is similar, which has similar setbacks and uses as a low-density residential district. The applicants would like to consolidate the subject properties into one lot, and this will decrease the density within the development. Comprehensive plan amendment CA 22-07 to change the future land use from rural residential to low-density residential district. If this is approved, then the rezone would be in harmony with the comprehensive plan. So staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request and is recommending approval.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
We're looking at 2.5 versus 3 acres on the existing.
Once they combine them.
2.5, yes, on the existing. I guess I'm always looking down the road to future owners, you know? Every, every property case has this, where down the road, there's a future owner. We're going ahead and putting a 0.5 acres requirement for a residential on this piece of property. It certainly wouldn't lower density then. It does lower density in its existing case, but the way the property is structured from the overhead picture, you certainly have got some 0.5s out there in the vacant already. Why don't we just do an, what do they call that, where it's not, it's legal but non-conforming versus taking it down to 0.5?
Lot size variances, how much you're asking?
Yeah.
Lot size variances are only recommended when there's citing or topographical constraints. So that wasn't something that we had considered with this, because there is suburban residential in the area. They would allow.
Can you tell me what the lot sizes are for each lot as it exists now, Lot 8 and Lot 10?
I can't tell.
Let's see.
I have the same questions as Charlie. We're combining the lots, yet proposing a lower zoning.
All Aspects drawing doesn't have the separation on it. It has the dotted line, maybe it's in there in some really light color. I can't tell.
Frank DeChesnay with All Aspects?
Sir, I'll have you come back up once I get, once we get done.
Well, I think I can answer this question, though.
Okay, go ahead.
I just need to see if I have the original plan with me. I'm sorry, it appears I do not.
Is the, how about this, is the primary lot less than an acre?
No, it's 1.22 acres, the one that has the structure on it.
Yeah.
And then the other one is 1.29 acres.
Okay, normally, it's, people do what they want with their own property. I'm failing to understand the reason to combine these lots. Am I, I'm with Charlie on this?
The reason that they want to? They had submitted the layout plan, and this is a condition of approval of the layout plan in order to combine the lots.
So they want to replant the lots?
Mm-hmm, into one lot.
When they replant the lots, they'll be less than the future land use, which is rural residential at 3 acres, they'll be 2 and 1/2. So then they gotta drop down to the next zoning category at low-density residential.
Correct, because right now, they're agriculture, so they don't need the, they're legal non-conforming.
Well, I don't understand the reason, but I understand the reason why staff has brought it forward, this path.
Yeah, there was one that was just done recently, right in here, that was similar. This was Vanover Shield. They did the same, they had the same. So that's why you see that orange color, that's the low-density residential district.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
And we currently are in this phase. We have a number of people that buy properties and move in from other areas, and they don't have the history or the same consideration on these sort of things as we do out here as far as space, from your neighbors and things like that. When they have a piece of property, and we're seeing it right now, that's available to subdivide, we're seeing it done. And I say down the road, I don't say these folks would consider such a thing. I'm saying future buyers. We have, we have people that think they're going to give it to their children, and they're gonna, and then they come up before us, because the children either can't afford it, or can't get together on ownership issues, and it's sold, and we have a new buyer. This is things I think were asked to take into consideration when we vote for these things down the road. And I think the other neighbors don't expect to see two-half acre lots. We're gonna have a whole audience full of people that don't want two-half acre lots, if that happens. That's why I'm coming. Thank you.
Yeah, you're saying mechanically, we changed the zoning to half an acre, and now this two-and-a-half acres could then be subdivided into five lots?
Correct.
Further questions for staff? Sir, do you wish to speak more on this? Do you have any comments?
The only thing I might add is that the next item on the agenda addresses the rezoning of this particular property, assuming this is approved.
Further questions, comments?
I'm gonna move to deny.
Motion to deny? Is there a second?
I'd second that.
Second for denial, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no? Four noes?
Nay.
And two nays. Motion carries. Item seven, motion fails, or excuse me, motion to deny is approved. Item eight.
So item eight is rezone, RZ 22-07 to rezone 2.5 acres from agriculture district to low-density residential district. The applicants are Jack and Marie Zimer. The agent is All Aspects Inc. The property is currently zoned agriculture district, the existing land use is residential. And with the previous motion, this would not be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, therefore, staff would have to recommend denial of this rezon, because it would not be in conformity with the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Can we put denial without, with prejudice, so that the folks can?
Yes, deny without prejudice, so they can come back, yes.
Further discussion? Does any, anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff's recommendation is different than it is in the packet due to the previous item, and staff is recommending denial of rezone 22-07 without prejudice.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for denial without prejudice, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item nine.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item number nine is comprehensive plan amendment 22-08 to amend the comprehensive plan to change future land use from suburban residential district to commercial district. The applicant and landowner is Ron Weifenbach. He's in the audience if you have questions for him. His agent is KTM Design Solutions, and Janelle is also in the audience if you have questions for her. Property is located approximately 0.38 miles southeast of the intersection of East Highway 44 and Reservoir Road. It's currently 2.6 acres, zoned agriculture district. Existing land use is residential. Access is off East Highway 44, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. The metrics on the screen are what staff utilizes. The metrics on the screen are what staff utilizes when considering a comprehensive plan amendment. You can see the current zoning, future land use, and the proposed zoning on the right. Staff does also take into account current zoning districts within one-half mile of the subject property. You can see those on the screen. Agriculture is in green, rural residential yellow, suburban residential is in orange, urban residential brown, and then Planned Unit Development in blue. Future land use within a half, one-half mile is low-density residential, suburban residential, and Planned Unit Development districts. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Staff received no objections or concerns. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is in the process of plating the subject property through the city of Rapid City. The applicant has stated he has purchased additional property to the north of the subject property to become proposed lot 11, which is on the screen. This additional property is included in this rezon request via meets and bounds description. The applicant has also stated that public water and sewer will be provided to the lot, eliminating the existing on-site wastewater treatment system. The applicant is proposing the following uses on the proposed lot 11. Worship services, refuge for handicapped persons, community garden, retail sales of products grown on the property, small retail and public services supporting highway frontage, and then adjacent subdivisions, as well as utilizing the existing single-family residence to become a caretaker residence for commercial operations. Staff noted that the caretaker residence is a conditional use in a commercially zoned district, and therefore, the applicant will need to obtain a conditional use permit. These are staff photos of a site visit of the subject property. You see the single-family residence as well as a large outbuilding. With that, staff recommends approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 22-08.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Charlie.
Just one, that little bump that's in the drawing, KTM's drawing, and I can't, I guess it does show north. Is that the additional property, Jason?
I believe he's obtaining a little more extra property on the east side of the property as well as to the north.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's on the other side of the building, garage and shed and that. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions for staff? Noting none. I do have a speaker request form here for Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ron Wyffenbach, 4153 Augusta Drive. And I just wanted to take a minute because this, this has been in the process for a long time, and I wanted to thank your staff for the work that they did to come to a conclusion. If you look to the, to the west side, you see the, like, the curve there. That's a major thoroughfare. That's gonna go into the new subdivision that's happening behind this. The little cutout piece right there is, is the lots that I'm looking to purchase from the developer, and then there'll be a road in between that and everything, what we're trying to do. And he's also worked with us very much, as you can see, to change the plat to meet the setbacks and everything we needed to meet. So he's worked with us on getting the 30-foot boundary on the, on the east side of that property. And so that, like I said, the cutout, there will be a few lots in there that we're, we're under contract to purchase from him to try to control the area there and keep it in the position that we need. And this is what we needed to keep this the way we are with having that. There's a big road in there. I'm not sure what, how big that road is, but it'll be the, it'll be the, it's the only road that, on that highway right there, that allows for left in, left out, right in, right out. So we worked out something that would work for both parties to get access. We gave up part of our parcel to get part of his parcel to make it all work. And staff, I couldn't believe them on a workout where I seen this, that they did with, and detail that they put into it. And I wanted to thank them. So I'll be here for questions if anybody has any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just one, I see that KTM was doing this, and I, it's my understanding that those, the new measurements are included in the description we're gonna approve here.
That is correct, yep. This is, these are the new measurements in this.
Thank you.
KTM is also doing the, and so they.
But I just wanted to make sure so that you didn't have to come back again, but that that's included this time?
I might have to go back for a conditional use permit or whatever in the future. But the main thing is, we just wanted to protect the integrity.
It'll be included in those boundaries.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Further questions for the applicant or staff?
Mr. Chair, move to approve staff's recommendations.
I didn't catch the second half of what you just said. Move to approve what?
Staff's recommendations.
Okay.
Second.
Motion in second to approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-08. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, no? Motion carries. We're on item 10.
And item number 10 is the follow-up request for this same property. It is rezone 22-08 to rezone 3.07 acres from agriculture district to commercial district. Same criteria applies. Staff did apply these metrics, did evaluate current zoning within one-half mile as well as future land use. With that, staff recommends approval of rezone 22-08.
Questions for staff on item 10? Noting none. I do have the same speaker request form, sir. I assume you're just here to answer questions if need be?
Yeah.
Or do you want to speak again? It's up to you.
No, thank you. I'll be here, and then I'll have to leave. I have a meeting with the sheriff.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of rezone RZ 22-08. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Motion carries. We're on item 11.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 11 is rezone RZ 21-30. It is to rezone 9.541 acres from suburban residential district to agriculture district. The applicant and landowner is Paul AJ Trankey Family Trust. The agent is Renner Associates. So this request has been in front of the Planning Commission several times. The first time was on November 22nd, 2021. And the Planning Commission continued rezone RZ 21-30 to allow time for the applicant to submit the plat or to record the plat with the registered deeds. Also, on February 14th, 2022, the, or the Planning Commission further continued the item to allow time for that plant to file the plat. At this time, that plant has not filed the plat. So staff is recommending to deny rezone 21-30 with prejudice until a plat has been filed at the registered deeds.
You said without, right?
Yeah, so they can come back whenever that's filed.
Questions for staff? Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Staff recommends to deny rezone RZ 21-30 without prejudice until the plat for the property has been filed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. Further discussion? Noting none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Motion carries. We're on item 12.
Item 12 is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-06. It is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from agriculture district to ranchette district. The applicant and landowner is Bruce and Sandra Rampleberg. The agent is KTM Design Solutions. Janelle's in the audience if there are any questions. The location of the property is at 1395, 13959 Neck Oak Road. Involves 18.52 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Access is taken off of Neck Oak Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Current zoning designations within one-half mile, there is a section of, or a subdivision that does allow acreages under the 10-acre lot size. The rural residential, which is the yellow, requires three. The applicants are requesting ranchette, which is a five-acre minimum. Future land use is the same. A lot of agriculture with the one subdivision that's rural residential. This was heard, or this was rather on for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns that were received. The applicant has requests, did request to rezon the property to rural residential district, which the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners denied without prejudice, requesting that the applicant come back with the ranchette zoning district. That's what they're doing right now. So currently, ranchette district allows single-family residents on large lots with agriculture uses, which is common in the area. Staff finds no significant issues with applicant's request. This appears to be in harmony with existing land uses within the area. And the majority of the properties within a half-mile are uses of large, large lot residential. So staff is recommending approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-06.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank the Ramplebergs for honoring our request to review and take a look at this. I think this is a good submission, though. Thank you.
I share your comment, I share your comment as well. Further questions for staff?
Cody, this, have you seen this one?
Yes, it's on the screen, thank you.
Larriett Road. Looking at the satellite photos, there's houses there. Is that still ag?
Correct, it's legal non-conforming. Those lots were planted back in, I think, like, 1960, 1970. So they're legal non-conforming for the size.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Janelle, I see you standing there. Do you want to speak to something?
Good morning, Janelle Fink with KTM Design Solutions here on behalf of the Ramplebergs. I appreciate staff's recommendation today, and I wanted you to know that Mr. Rampleberg is in agreement with the proposed rezoning. But I put together this exhibit for you that appears here. The discussions that you had about a month ago, you had some pretty passionate adjoining landowners or neighboring landowners that spoke to you about this rezon. We had initially come in and requested rural residential, which is the same as the yellow zoning that you see just slightly to the west of Mr. Rampleberg's property. Mr. Rampleberg is highlighted in the yellow and red around his property. So I just wanted to point out that one of the things that we look at as individual landowners and as consultants, when somebody comes in and requests plating that might go along with rezoning, is we look at the existing zoning map and the way that the property is being used, similar to the way that staff does. And I wanted to point out to you that within this half-mile of Mr. Rampleberg's property, there are 18 lots that are less than 10 acres in size. Nine of them are zoned ag, and nine of them are zoned rural residential. There is no ranchette in this area. And recently, we adopted a new zoning ordinance that included this ranchette zoning designation. And there are seven lots here that would, that would have fit that ranchette designation, and they were not included in that. So that change was not made at that time. There are also of the ranchette lots, or excuse me, the rural residential lots, there are two of them that can be subdivided further, adding another three lots to the 18 that you already see there. I guess I just wanted to make sure that you understood. Sometimes when, you know, people come and they speak passionately about, about their area and that they think that it shouldn't be rezoned differently, there's some clear pattern and clear precedent here that we also follow as consultants and as landowners. The one lady that spoke most passionately owned property on Larriett Road, a five-acre parcel directly across from Mr. Rampleberg. And Mr. Rampleberg is a true gentleman. He paid us an additional $300 and spent an additional six weeks' worth of time and had us come here again so that he could change that zoning designation. But I would think it would be really difficult if somebody were to challenge this, saying that rural residential wasn't appropriate. I think that would be a difficult challenge for the county to defend if it came to that. So I, again, we're happy to comply with the request for ranchette, but based on these existing uses and what you see here, the rural residential would have been an appropriate use. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Janelle, thank you for putting the map together and telling the other side of the story. It certainly helps us going forward.
Any further questions? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-06. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to approve staff's recommendations.
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Motion carries. We're on item 12. Excuse me, item 13.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 13 is rezone 22-06. It is to rezon 18.52 acres from agriculture district to ranchette district. Again, the applicants are Bruce and Rample, Bruce and Sandra Rampleberg, and the agent is KTM. Janelle's in the audience if there are any questions. The location of the property is 1359 Neck Oak Road. Current zoning in the area shows several parcels that are zoned rural residential district, which requires a smaller lot size than ranchette district. And there's agriculture district in the area, which allows similar, similar uses and setbacks. As ranchette district, the Planning Commission just approved the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to change the future land use from agriculture to ranchette. So it's in consistency with the comprehensive plan. Staff finds no significant issues with applicant's request. It appears to be in harmony with existing land use within the area. So staff is recommending approval of rezone 22-06.
Questions for staff on this one?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Cody, will you put up the satellite map? I've got a question on that. It looks like there's a pretty good wash going through there, and it says no flood damage or no flood, you know, problems.
Correct, so that, there, there could be flooding there. It's just a non-studied area by FEMA, where FEMA hasn't dictated any flood zone on that property.
So it's a neutral point at this point for us?
Correct, there still could be flooding on the property, but there's nothing that the applicant would have to meet for FEMA requirements for flood insurance or through the county.
Okay.
Additional questions? Noting none. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Staff recommends approval of rezone RZ 22-06. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Motion carries. We're on item 14.
Item 14 is Planning and Development Overlay PU 22-06. It is to allow Planning and Development Overlay to allow a single-family residence to be used as a summer/winter education music camp, up to four off-season musical performance concerts per year, sheds and cabins for classes and rehearsals, and a bed and breakfast. The applicant and landowner is Brett Wallfish and Katie S. Renova. The location of the property is 13271 Condeck Road. Involves 17.04 acres. Current zoning district is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Condeck Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. When the Planning Commission considers Planning and Development requests, there's five, five items that they can consider. Sorry, seven items that they can consider for Planning and Development Overlay. The answers are on the board. I'll read them aloud. Number one, yes. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district conform to the uses by right or a conditional use permit in an agriculture district. Number two, yes. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon surrounding properties. Number three, yes. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district meet the standards governing area density and off-street parking of agriculture district. Number four, yes. The proposed PUD overlay district involves 17 acres. Number five, yes. The proposed PUD overlay district is owned by the applicants and managers, Brett Wallfish and Katie S. Renova. Number six, no. Condeck Road is an average 12-foot-wide road that is not within road district or maintained by county highway. And number seven is not in five. The Planning Commission may also consider the seven criteria that dictate a conditional use permit application. Again, the answers are on the screen. I'll read them aloud. Number one, no. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district could be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. There's concern from emergency services and staff about the location of the property on a minimally improved road. Number two, yes. The proposed PUD overlay districts should not substantially impair, diminish the usage values or enjoyment of property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. The events take place within structures, so there should not be a nuisance to this surrounding properties. Number three, yes. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for the uses permitted in the district. Number four, yes. The proposed PUD overlay district contains adequate utilities. Take that back, that should be no. The proposed PUD overlay district contains adequate utilities during other necessary site improvements. However, access roads are not, are not improved to county standards. Number five, no. Uh, number five, no. Access to the subject property is through sixty-six foot wide access easement Klondike Road. And it is not maintained by the road district or county highway. The road width is on an average of nine to twelve feet wide. The applicants have constructed pull-offs. However, staff does not believe that this will alleviate traffic congestion on a single-lane road. Number six, yes. The requested uses conform to all applicable regulations for an agriculture district with an approved PUD overlay district. Number seven, yes. The future land use of the property identifies the property of agriculture. Large lot residential in natural areas is consistent with this district. Uh, currently on the property, there is a single-family residence being built and an onsite wastewater treatment system. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. Uh, the comments were attached. County highway didn't have any comments as it's a private access easement and a Forest Service road. Uh, the emergency services, the fire coordinator Jerome Harvey didn't, uh, comment back in here. However, he did meet staff on onsite and did have concerns with the access road and the parking for emergency services to be able to turn around on the property. Uh, the applicants are requesting a PUD overlay to allow a music camp, concerts, and bed and breakfast. Uh, the music camp could be held in the summer and winter with up to five to ten faculty members, twelve to twenty-four students, and one to two chaperones. Uh, concerts, up to four events per year with up to a hundred attendees. And the bed and breakfast would be operated in the main house throughout the year when the music camp isn't operational. On April seventh, twenty twenty-two, uh, staff performed a site visit and found the applicants having on work on the house in Septic. The property is seventeen nature acres, which could provide adequate parking for the events. Uh, staff would not support parking near Klondike Road or in the front of the residence along, uh, the parallel parking. And then the applicants have constructed pull-offs on Klondike Road, but however, the road is only nine to twelve feet wide. Staff did not believe that Klondike Road can support the additional traffic the proposed uses will have. Staff finds that the requests that uses do not meet all the criteria the planning commission may consider. If Klondike Road is improved to county standards, the criteria could be met for the planning and development overlay. So with that, staff is, uh, recommending denial of planning and development overlay PU twenty-two dash zero six without prejudice until Klondike Road is improved.
Thank you. Questions for staff? I got one. Uh, there's, there's a lot of talk about the road. Um, water is, uh, is another question I would have. Um, and I, and I don't have the stats in front of me, but there's something about, uh, when you have so many people uh, over a certain number of days, then your system becomes, you know, private to like, not public, but like semi-public or non, like transitional. What am I, you know, word I'm looking for that's?
Yeah, you're looking for, they need a, they need a water right for, from the state.
No, it has more to do with the number of people that are going to be there and the, and, and
The transient system.
The transients. Is it a transient system?
It's a transient non-community system.
Okay.
That's what it would fall under, under the state's, um, requirements, and it would require some kind of sampling and oversight by the state.
Okay.
For a transient non-community system. It's almost like a campground or a, a similar type of use like that where you have people that don't live there that utilize the water system, but it's not a community water system, so.
Right. So at some point, once the, once the usage on-site gets to a certain level with a certain number of people over a certain period of time, then it would move into a transient system and those requirements would be?
It could, yes. And I do believe, um, that staff has spoken with the applicants about, um, talking to DEA and are about, um, obtaining a water right, um, to verify with them that they would not consider this a commercial use and a commercial water right would not be required.
Okay.
So it's our feeling that it may be required, so.
Okay.
So, uh, staff actually talked to the state, um, and they are not at this time requiring a water rate.
Got it.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
If it did get into that, um, you should know that it, it does require some regular annual testing as well as some initial testing on the well, uh, regarding the flow and, and content. And that's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions for staff before I go to the speaker request forums?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Do you know what fire district this would be in? I just wondered, you know, we, it would be helpful to include the whatever local volunteer fire department is responsible for responding.
Off the top of my head, I'm not one hundred percent sure. I would assume it's out of, um,
Rockerville?
Either Keystone or Rockerville is what I would hazard to guess.
That's two of the better.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Rob.
I'll point out that I did a site inspection a week ago, Saturday. And I understand staff's concerns about Klondike Road. Because on my way in to do the site inspection, I ran into FedEx truck. And I literally had to back up until I found one of those pull-offs. But I'm just saying, that's just a normal s- day-to-day circumstance. You have an event, and then you compound that with an emergency, then you're going to have a problem. So from a safety standpoint, I have a pretty large concern. As you can see in the photograph there, Jerome, uh, you're not going to get two vehicles through there, and that's one of the better spots.
Okay. Additional comments? Questions? Move to the speaker request forums. Um, I believe that I have the forums in the order that I've received them, um, up here at the DAS. First one is Zach Haig. And for everyone, if you would just state your name again when you come up, in case I don't say it right.
My name is Zach Haig. Thank you for having me, Mr. Chair, committee members and commissioners. My wife and I own twenty-five acres that directly borders the proposed site of the Rushmore Music Festival to the south and to the west. When we purchased our land, we bought a lot zoned for agricultural because it reflects our interest in what we'd like to do with our land. Um, our goal is to have a place in the country where we can have a few horses and a few cows for our kids as forage projects. We chose Klondike Road for the fact that it has limited traffic, plenty of room between neighbors, uh, as compared to a more residential or commercially zoned lot. When we heard from our neighbors that Brett and Katie were proposing to build a music venue that will have a constant flow of traffic in and out of the community, we became very concerned. Imagine your personal residence, um, and how you feel if someone wanted to run a music business next door. This business would include daily music lessons, lessons, large group training sessions with twenty to thirty kids on site, twenty-four, seven, uh, for weeks at a time. Concerts with up to a hundred people in attendance and forty cars would utilize your property to get to the, to the venue. On top of that, they plan on running a bed and breakfast. To accommodate all of this, they have to build two dormitories, ten to twelve cabins, and create multiple parking lots. This is my main point of contention. What I have described in my mind is, is most certainly a, a commercial use of the property. If all property owners off Klondike were afforded the same building permits that would needed, that are needed for the Rushmore Music Festival, the area of the hills would be a complete mess. When I first reached out to Brett last fall, I brought up my concerns regarding Klondike Road itself. His response was that the county would most definitely have to widen the road to make it, uh, two lanes. It was at that time that I informed him that Klondike Road is privately owned and privately maintained by the neighborhood. To have customers and concert attendees coming and going to me is a complete abuse of the easement, which is in place to allow people to reach their home sites. On top of my concerns for Klondike Road, I also want to bring up a safety issue regarding Highway sixteen. Where you're approaching Klondike Road from Rapid City, you have to slow the traffic down in the passing lane. You then pull off into the swale to get your car off of Highway sixteen, um, and wait for the, the oncoming traffic to clear before you can cross onto Klondike Road. There is no turning lane. To me, this would be dangerous for a bus delivering kids, or especially when there are multiple cars pulling off Highway sixteen all, all at the same time for a concert. If this music venue were to be approved, I believe the county would need to do a complete safety or traffic assessment to consider the need for a turning lane. I realize the music festival and business is a dream for Brett and Katie, but I would ask the planning committee and commissioners to take into account the current property owners of the land off Klondike, who have spent their lives investing emotional and financial capital to achieve dreams of owning land and property safe for a family. Um, that would also provide solitude and privacy. All of us would be compromised with the introduction of a commercial business next door. With that said, I would ask that you permanently disqualify Klondike Road for commercial development, specifically just approving all business associated with Mount Rushmore Music Festival. Are there any questions for me?
Questions for Mr. Haig.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll just point out that Zach did reach out to me. We actually, he met me the, uh, the day that I went and did the site inspection. And I got a lot of emails from various folks, uh, Matt Robinson, Doug and Amy Zock, is it? And Dale and Trudy Brassfield. So I want you folks to know that your emails and your letters are in, in this packet, so you can read them. But just know that they're in this packet for, for all these, uh, other planning commissioners to review.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, next speaker request forum is, uh, James Watherell? Wathen.
Good morning. Good morning. Uh, again, my name is James Wa- James Wathen. My wife and I, uh, live at thirteen two thirty-two Klondike Road. Uh, Zach, uh, pretty much put it to, uh, to a, to a great length there. And my, I have kind of a, maybe it's kind of a dumb question or a stupid question. I understand that Brett and Katie, um, are doing this under a nonprofit status. My dumb question maybe is, how's that affect their nonprofit status if they're going to do a bed and breakfast? Because I'm pretty sure that generates revenue. So maybe a stupid question, but, um, that would be my question for everyone is, is how does that work with a nonprofit status? Also, yes, um, the road has been a hot topic. Um, I will tell you that the road has been a hot topic for us with the congestion of construction going on at that place. Um, a- as you see in your packet, my wife and I submitted a letter with pictures of a tractor-trailer delivering, uh, supplies to the res- to the residents, um, that got stuck in our driveway, um, causing my two children who go to school in Rapid City to be late for school that day. Um, and then the only way for the, for the, uh, for the tractor-trailer to get out is to cut through our driveway, go through our meadow, um, to the adjacent landowner, make a U-turn and, and get out and go back out Klondike Road. So I'm here opposing, I'm not opposing the, the residential house. I'm not opposing that. That is their dream. That's great. I am here opposing the quote-unquote "music resort" that is being built, currently being built. So I thank you for your time and any questions.
Um, first, I, I don't know if anyone up here, uh, has, has the knowledge or, or I guess background to be able to answer your question on the nonprofit status. Um, that would be something that I would ask that you, uh, maybe bring to the Pinkton County staff. And if need be, they can talk to the state's attorney, that, that type of stuff. So, uh, beyond that, are there, are there questions for Mr. Wathen? Noting none. Thank you, sir. Cody's maybe going to take a shot, huh?
Yeah. Uh, Cody Sack, uh, environmental planner. So the, the, the nonprofit versus profit didn't play any consideration into the county's, um, consideration of, of this. If they're, even if they're, even if they were profiting off the, the music festival, uh, they could still request it in the planning and development overlay, and that's what they did. So it, it'd be between them and some, and the government for tax purposes, and if they're calling themselves a nonprofit and they're profiting, it, it's no concern really with the county.
Noted. Thank you very much. Next speaker, uh, request, I believe, is, uh, Jackie Baker.
Good morning. My name is Jackie Baker. I'm a member of the Rushmore Music Festival Board. First of all, uh, just, uh, in, in response to, to, to the questions that have been brought forward to you, this is a nonprofit organization. Katie and Brett take no income from this camp whatsoever. So, uh, the camp is tuition-free, uh, and the only thing that, that is paid towards this camp is, uh, uh, board and, and food, food and board. Uh, and that is used directly to pay, uh, to pay for the meals and boarding for the, uh, for, for those that attend. It, it would take place over approximately twenty-five days out of a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day year. So, uh, the, the impact upon this area would be minimal, okay? Very, very minimal. The children, uh, that attend this festival, um, receive enough, uh, education and training that it, that it would encompass a year's worth of lessons. Uh, it also, uh, I, I just, it, it makes classical music something that's going to, to move forward in the future by, uh, instructing these young people. Classical music is a foundation of our world. And so, uh, that is, that is one of the, the things that I would ask for you to sincerely consider. Um, it would also affect the Black Hills area, um, because they do do concerts, uh, not just at this facility, if that would be the case, but also all around the Black Hills. So that it does very, very much affect this area and the future of classical music. Um, the other thing that, you know, I would like for you to know is that Katie and Brett take no income, period, none. So that, uh, uh, this is not something that they're doing, um, to improve their life. This is, they're doing this to improve the life of classical music. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I've got a comment.
Go ahead.
I'm a musician, and, and from what you're saying, I agree with you. The, the problem I have in looking at this is the people that live in the area are not addressing that. That is not their concern.
And they are not addressing this, and it's something that I really believe, uh, that impacts all of us. The classical music or music of any form impact, impacts us all.
And I agree with you. I do. I say, but, but the neighbors are looking at it a whole different ballgame.
I understand that. I just wanted to show you the other side of the story.
Sure. And I appreciate it.
That is, that is why I, I came forward. I don't mean to take your time, just.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Jackie, on the selection of property, was the board involved in that?
Uh, no, they were not. Not that, not to my knowledge. There are some other board members here, and they may have a different answer for that, but to my knowledge, I do not believe that, uh, that we were.
Okay, and then just?
And I would come on the board after, after the fact, so I don't, I really can't.
Just a second question. Is there, you wouldn't know, is there any basis, uh, how does the board operate? When you say nonprofit, is it a bylaw-type of situation, or is that a handshake?
It's a bylaw.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Can you give me, I'm new to this, so, um, I haven't
So am I. So, so there you go.
Been following the process here. Can you tell me, in those twenty-six days, how that's going to operate? Because I've seen some places where, um, the kids are coming and going daily, and then I see others where they're staying on camp, on campus. Can you give me a scenario of those twenty-six days, how much traffic is going to be generated by that? Are there, are there twenty-six vehicles coming in every day and leaving every night? Are they coming in once a week? And that's outside of the events that would be held there?
That's a good question. Actually, it will be twenty-one days because the camp is three weeks long. They come in the morning at about eleven o'clock, and then they leave again at approximately six-thirty. So, and there will not be twenty-six cars coming in. They're housed in, in, um, actually in chamber music. That's how, they're housed together in their chamber music groups. So there will not be twenty-six cars coming in, I would wager to say, and I can't give you a specific number, but I would wager to say at the most, ten cars would be coming in during those timeframes. Does that help you?
Over those twenty-one days?
Yes, of those twenty-one days.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker request forum I have is from, uh, Stephen Ben.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, yeah. Uh, my name is Stephen Ben, B-E-N-N. Uh, and with me is?
I'm Scott Schutz. I'm, I'm one of the board members as well. It might behoove it just to get both of us up here at the same time, if that works for you. If not, I can come up afterwards.
As long as, uh, so you have a speaker request forum as well?
I do.
Uh, just tried to, uh, I, I don't, the reason we, we like one at a time is people tend to start talking over each other, and it becomes kind of messy. Uh, so if we can just respect that, please, no, please go ahead. You can stay there, but that's, that's my concern.
Okay. Uh, I'd, I'd like to address a couple of concerns that were raised by Mr. Coon. Uh, there, the, uh, uh, the Rushmore Music Festival, created in twenty fifteen, uh, is in fact the embodiment of a, uh, and I, I see on the screen there, uh, Brett Wallfish. Uh, actually, Brett, may, may I read? Actually, Brett, may I read directives to Brett up on the screen?
I normally let the applicant kind of follow up on all of the items. Traditionally, we allow general comment, we allow the speaker request forms, and then it's an important part of the process to allow the applicant to kind of follow up on all of the things that maybe get said, and it helps answer a lot of the questions, if you will.
This is my first go-around, so...
No, you're good. Go ahead.
Okay. The Rushmore Music Festival is in fact the embodiment of a longstanding plan to create a, an environment in which twenty to twenty-three very gifted, high-functioning classical musician students can come together for three, possibly six weeks during the course of the year, during which they will receive instruction from visiting faculty as well as Brett and Katie. As we envision this, the applicant, the students will arrive at the time of the beginning of the session and will reside at the residence. We do not foresee this to-and fro movement of students up and down the road. There will be a, when they do travel, they will be in a van, which will accompany the students to whatever venue they're going to. So, in fact, there is not this thoroughfare-type of picture that some folks are envisioning. The students will arrive on day one, they will go home on day twenty-two, and any incidental travel back and forth will not present, I don't believe, any undue pressure on the road more than what is existing now. This year is perhaps a little different because the construction is not complete, but the absolute traffic on the road, I don't envision being overly burdensome. Second of all, there have been improvements made on the road in the form of four, possibly five turnouts that will allow a passing lane for oncoming vehicles to pass one another. As it stands now, I don't know the current condition of the residents there, but they do receive FedEx trucks and other sorts of deliveries that, you know, come back and forth on the road and have been doing so since, I would imagine, the time at which they have moved there. The nature of the organization is one in which the students are highly disciplined, they will be highly supervised. There is no intent for this organization to expand more than what is already in your documentation. There's no financial interest in this. The, the number of concerts that might occur over the course of the year will be, I think, two to four. We have not, on this, at this date, seen any more than a hundred people that have attended concerts. And if you consider three to four people per vehicle, this may be twenty-five to thirty-three vehicles, if my math is correct. So, I think, I think the impact on the environment, while it may have been somewhat burdensome during the course of the construction, I think this is time-limited, and I don't believe this will be a longstanding issue.
Go ahead, sir.
As I...
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Charlie.
I have one question for you. And I guess it's basically, I'm wondering whether you're considering that the Rushmore Music Festival will grow, and I'm going by, you said, three, possibly six weeks. What does that mean?
It's a great question. Thank you for asking. The current plan is a three-week session. There is a possibility, it's not carved in stone at this point, but there is a possibility that there, we could envision a second three-week session in this, recognizing with the same conditions as described for the first three weeks. That is to say, students would arrive, students will stay, students will leave. There is not a daily back-and-forth thoroughfare-type of traffic.
And so, I understand, the same facilities, same format as the first three weeks?
Correct. Correct. And again, roughly twenty students, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two students, but certainly not, this, it's, in a way, it's a bit unfortunate that the word "festival" is used because I think that creates a vision in people's minds that this is going to be a Woodstock or, you know, some sort of large-scale venue that is going to attract hordes of participants.
Thank you. Again, my name is Scott Schutz. I'm on the board as well, and I have been on the board for a few months, I guess, maybe six months or so here now. And I have attended a number of their events. They've been held at the DALL, and it's been about a hundred people or so. And it's two events that I've been aware of each year, one in the spring and one in the fall, and they're fundraiser events for their organization. And the vision that they've had of building this facility has, as I understand it, gone on for quite some time. They're in their eighth year this year, and initially it began at Black Hills State, and that's where they housed it. And logistics and time demands and things like that, as time goes by, get in the way. So, the vision was to have their own venue for this purpose. And so, that's what they're trying to create, and it looks as though there's an awful lot of opposition to it that's based on speculation and fear as opposed to reality. The reality is that it's a relatively short period of time during the year, as Steve mentioned. It's been three weeks, and they've put their PUD together at the suggestion of your staff to include the max that they would want, and that's why it's six weeks. So, it's not six weeks, it's never been six weeks. It could be six weeks because they put that in there as an offer of what it could be that they would like the PUD to conclude. Right now, it's three weeks, and so it's twenty-one days. I hosted four of the students last summer for their event, and they travel in groups. It's not twenty-four cars each day in and out. On that topic, I understand it's ag land, I looked at the ordinances, and according to the ordinances, you could have a daycare up there, and that's as many as twelve people per day, five days a week, in and out of there, and that's twenty-four visits per day, drop-off and pick-up. So, we wouldn't be here talking about that if it was called a daycare. And it really is akin to a daycare. It's students all of a daycare age, some a little older, but they're being taught lessons and in an educating environment for a short period of time. So, that would be a permissible use under the ag status because we've called it a festival. There's a lot of opposition to this three-week event that just seems to be blown out of proportion. The other part about this is, you know, every homeowner up there can have a party. They could have a hundred people there, they could do it every week if they wanted to, and they don't have to get anybody's permission to do it. And they could have all those cars in and out, and they could do it every day of the week if they wanted to, until somebody claimed it was a nuisance. But it's all about respecting your neighbors, and part of this process for Brett and Katie has been respect for the neighbors. They came and did it the right way, I think, to the commission and looking for a PUD, so they are legal and they know, everybody knows what's going on. But, so that's the main point I wanted to make, is that it seems to me that it's been blown out of proportion into something that it's really not. So, there is going to be development in the area, and it's a good thing, and this is a good development, as I see it, for the area. It's not something that's a bad business, a dirty business, a noisy business, or anything like that. It's a good classical music brought to this area by young people that are motivated to do something good with their lives and their time and their resources, and I think it's a good thing for the community. We did have a meeting out there with the board. We could go on Saturday. That's a suggestion of the commission when we were here last time. There were two people that showed up and one that called. The two that did show up, I think, got some insights as to what it was, and I think they left more favorably impressed with what was happening and with no concerns. The people that are here today complaining the loudest, most of them were not there. So, it is not a situation where there's going to be tons of cars in and out, an eyesore to anybody or anything like that. There's plenty of parking on-site. You've seen the view of it. So, it is not going to be the thing that's being made out to be. The road is a problem, and I think Brett and Katie have acknowledged that from the beginning, and everybody that lives up there knows it's a problem. And whether they have a party and have a hundred guests or fifty guests, it's a problem. And to make it Brett and Katie's problem and their time to solve it, I think, is unreasonable. We do recognize, as an organization, that it needs to be addressed, and I think Brett and Katie and your staff have pointed that out, I think, is the primary impetus to declining the PUD. So, if, I just wanted to be heard on those sorts of issues because I do think it's a great organization, it's been overblown as to the problem in the community, and I think they're complying with the ag status zoning that you have there. It's certainly compatible to what would be authorized without all of those hearings. And it's certainly, that they're going to have four events, you could call them parties and be quiet about it, make it happen. But because it's an event with some music association, now we're all here fighting that they can't have it. Whereas the neighbors tomorrow could go have a party with a hundred people, and no one could complain, and nobody's going to judge them or anything like that, so... On the road issue, the last thing, and then I'll be done, and Brett can talk to this and his to mention, I think, but the, on the road issue, they've made some efforts on their own money to accommodate the road. They've made some pullouts, and I think they've been helpful, and I think those that have visited and had to use them, they've had some success in that. They've offered to make another one, so they could make more. So, but there's obviously some things that can be done to accommodate everybody and alleviate that as the primary concern. We're a little unclear on our end what would be required of the county with regard to making the road acceptable so that they could proceed with their venture. So, we would like some clarification of that, if that's the route that we need to go, but that's kind of where we're at with it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Does the faculty stay up there with the kids?
The faculty...
Come and go?
There are three faculty members that would stay up there, and I think historically one has been offsite. They have only three or four during the event, and they would stay up there in the main house. And then there's the A-frame structures, which would be to accommodate the boys on one end and girls on the other during the event, and that's the only time those would be used.
Then you're going to have workers? You'll have cooks? You're going to have...
No. There's no cooks. There's no workers. It's, it's...
How do these kids, what do they do?
They've made arrangements, as I understand it, with one chef, and they've catered it before, and they have the food there. And I think it's just during part of it, and Brett can address that part of it. I haven't been involved in that, but that's just by observation and talking amongst ourselves at the board about that, how that handled, is handled.
So, he'll cater it, bring it in daily?
I think it's brought in either the day of or the, for several days. Brett will have to answer that, but it is catered in. They are building a kitchen, but it's not a commercial kitchen, they're not doing it for that purpose.
Any further questions from Mr. Schutz?
Just to be fair now, you guys are board members too?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And do either of you have any knowledge or were involved in the selection of the property that we're reviewing here?
No, sir. I've been on the board for almost three years, and I've not been involved.
And I've been on the board for, I think, six months to a year, and no.
Okay.
Was not.
Thank you. I've got to tell you, I think the Rushmore Music Festival is an excellent item and done well, and done well by the community as well as the children that they've assisted. But in all fairness to your question, if somebody up there decided to have a hundred-person party and they kept having that party, there's plenty of review processes they'd run into, just as this is being done, just so that that isn't a comparison, that's a fair one to us. We're reviewing the use of this property, and that's difficult enough to do because of the road situation. I'm saying it's not the neighbors that either attend or don't attend, and we did ask them to come to your meeting, and I'm sorry they didn't avail themselves to do that. But I want to let you know, there would be many review processes that go through. This is quite an extensive use of the property versus your other neighbors.
Right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Schutz?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Ron.
I'm trying to listen to both sides here. Now, if I understand it, you would have the students that would be using the road, then you would have the owners themselves using the road, you would have the guests for the bed and breakfasts using the road, you'd have the faculty using the road, and then I'm assuming there's going to be service vehicles once in a while, deliveries and whatnot. So, I'm trying to figure out just, I've heard the word could be, I think, assume probability relatively, so those are all, how do you take those and actually put a finite number to that? That's the problem I'm having. Because once this is approved, if it goes that route, how do we really know it's going to happen until it happens? And then it's going to be too late to go back.
Well, to address your question, there will be all of those that you mentioned using the road, but it's not in the numbers or the significance that I think is the concern. I mean, for this year, as we mentioned, there's twenty-one days, and there's twenty-two students. They don't all have cars, they move in packs, you know? The groups that perform together usually stay together. And this year, they're going to be offsite, so there's going to be a little more traffic this year than there would be in subsequent years. In subsequent years, once the venue is up, there won't be that student traffic, except maybe on the weekend, and they're contemplating and then process of purchasing a van. So, it'd be one vehicle that would take the students to an outing, or two vehicles if they have twenty-four, they can't get them all in one van, to an outing in town over the weekend. But this is a camp that's on-site, and it's designed to foster music in an environment where it's controlled. They're not going out in and out every day, so the traffic, aside from the owners' back-and-forth, would be minimal.
Yeah. Again, I, if you permit me, it's a residential facility, and so the students move in packs, they're there basically for five days during the course of it. There is no back-and-forth movement on a daily basis, and any movement that they do travel is in the capacity of a van or two, so...
You know, on Saturday, I attended a groundbreaking for an event center near the junction on thirty-five and Highway sixteen, and this is going to be a design for a capacity of three hundred people. Now, being a commissioner, it really puts me in a hard position because I have to listen to both sides, and I'm very sympathetic, and I appreciate, you know, the Rushmore Music Festival and what they're trying to do for the kids. But before they got too far in the planning process, I said, "You better go talk to the neighbors. This is where you're going to hit the, this is where you're going to have a train wreck. Talk to the neighbors, make sure you're all on board going forward, because if you're not, this is why we're here today." I don't think there's that, I don't see that transparency happen in the very beginning of this process. That's just my opinion. But when I look at the diagrams in here, this, although it's residential, it has a very significant commercial overtone when you look at it. It just does. Looks like a KOA campground almost when you first look at it. And I think if the neighbors could have been more involved in the very beginning, it would have been a little easier. We might not be here today. So, that's my two cents, but being a commissioner, you certainly put me in a hard position.
Well, thank you for your thoughts. I'm going to actually throw that over to Brett to address that. I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe there were outreaches made to the residents of the area, and again, I will...
Absolutely.
Kick it over to Brett.
I got five more speaker request forms here, so...
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you, guys. Next speaker request is Doug Zhang. Zog? Apologies, that's why I ask you guys to...
I fell asleep, so...
Restate your names as you come up.
I'm Doug Zog. I live at one-three-two-four on Klondike Road. And you guys were talking about respect and maybe, you know, seeing what the neighbors thought before they even started a project, and to me, that's probably what they should have done, probably before they even purchased their property, is went around to everybody and got their opinion and made the board. If that was my board, I probably would have fired them all because they should have been involved in the purchase of the property and where it was located for it to really make sense. But anyways, this area is a neighborhood. But anyways, this area is, is a neighborhood, you know, we all like it quiet, it's nice to go home because you get away from the city. The neighborhood is just not designed for the increased traffic that they're, that they're talking. As far as safety concerns, you know, there's only one way in, one way out, there's no emergency route out. They can say that T P road is the emergency, but you either need a high clearance vehicle or four-wheel drive to go down T P with how rough it is. It's, it's more of a side-by-side trail than an emergency exit. It's, it's, T P's not maintained at all. And then on Highway sixteen, in the summers, at the peak of summer, Highway sixteen is, is absolutely crammed with traffic. And I don't know if you've been to Klondike Road, but you come around a corner, come down the hill, and our turn is at the bottom of that hill. If you've got twenty or thirty cars stacked up waiting to make that turn, which can happen, you know, if you're gonna have a hundred people at a venue. There, it's, it's dangerous because there's, there's nowhere to go, there's no turn lane. And if you've got twenty or thirty vehicles sitting there, the next guy that comes over the hill doing sixty-five, seventy miles an hour and doesn't know about this area, you're gonna have a big accident coming. Or a big accident's gonna occur there at some point. They did put in five pullovers, but if you're talking forty or fifty cars, I don't, I don't know what that's gonna do. Because if emergency services need to get in and you've got thirty cars wanting to come out and you've got all five spots filled in, the emergency services still can't get by. I guess one other question I had, if somebody can answer this for me, was about the easement. When they state an easement that there'll be a new use, I guess I'm questioning what that is, because to me, this is a new use. So I don't know if that requires them to get approval from all the landowners that the easement runs through. I don't know if anybody can answer that question.
Well, we'll have staff come up here after you, after you're done.
Because as far as I read it, they would need signatures from all the properties that that easement goes through, if this is considered a new use. There's one other house at the end of Klondike that had an Airbnb for a little while, and I, I, they may still. We've had plenty of calls into the county and the county, for some reason, can't figure out who the owners are and can't contact them. And last summer, there was quite a few people wandering around all over trying to find these Airbnbs in the middle of the night. And I, I really think that's gonna be another concern if they plan on having Airbnb. One of the neighbors was woke up at like one o'clock in the morning because there was somebody parked in his yard trying to find this Airbnb. And for security purposes, we, we just don't want that, I don't, I don't want anybody trespassing on my property. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
So that's an easement, do you know what the width of that easement is that goes through there? Is that all on private property, or is it some of that on federal property as well?
Well, it's, it's a sixty-six-foot easement, but I guess what I'm questioning is, is where it starts on Wathen's property, goes through Hag's property, and then ends up at their property. If, that's why I'm questioning the definition of new use, because all this is residential back there. So to me, if you're gonna have a commercial property, that's new use compared to the surrounding landowners, what they're using their, the easement for. So that's why I was looking for a clarification on the definition.
I just wondered if, if there's an easement, then there's legal boundaries, does anybody even know where those boundaries are?
Cody, can you come up and answer, address this question?
Cody Sack, environmental planner, so the easement is a sixty-six-foot wide access easement. For the purposes of if it's a new use or not, the county doesn't interpret easements that would be between a lawyer and, and the properties. We don't interpret, interpret that, we just look at access. Is there one other question? Sorry, I didn't hear all of them, I guess.
Is the, does that existing, does the sixty-six-foot wide easement extend through all the other properties out to highway? And then the second part to that, I think, was, is some of it on federal property as opposed to private property?
Yes, when you turn, when you turn off on Highway sixteen, which is farther up in this left up here, this is Forest Service. And then once it gets past Forest Service, that's where it hits a sixty-six-foot wide access easement that goes to this property where it turns into a fifty-foot access for this back here, which I don't know if this is private or public, I'm not a hundred percent sure, private.
Okay. Does, does that answer your questions?
But what's considered new use?
That'd be, that'd be a determination for honestly, an attorney, because we don't, we don't dictate. We just look to see if the property has access, if there's any specific writing or anything in an easement. The county never, never interprets that because it opens us up for legal.
Where are you seeing this new use in, in the packet, sir?
So Cody, do you need a, is there a special use permit that is needed to go off Highway sixteen into Klondike?
So the, the forest, the Forest Service has issued special access permits for all of these properties back here. And, and in, in the past, when we've, when we've dealt with these, even with the, even with the Forest Service and the special use permit, the Forest Service is limited on what they can, what they can enforce with that, because that's actually public land on, on public property, so they can't. There, there are certain limitations that they even have when they issue those, those special use permits.
Yeah. This is the first time I've ever had the question on the, the purpose of the, the use of the easement. Normally, it's, it's either an access easement or it's not. I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to address that or, or the board, I think that that would be a follow-up question with, with staff. Cody, I wanna answer one other question that came up with the previous two speakers, and that was, the board at this time is unclear what would be required for the road. Do we have that answer for them, or is that a?
So in, in staff's comments, they put to county standards. Honestly, I believe that the biggest concern with the road comes from emergency services. So I would say that they'd wanna work with the fire department and emergency services on what the, what they would want to see on that road. I'm guessing where two vehicles can pass each other, or where one can really pull.
What's the county standard, though, for a residential area? And, and I understand the hardship here because all of these lots were platted prior to, you know, such rules and some of the language and some of the notes where that this was a logging road at one time for the Forest Service. And so how, what, what is that standard that they would be, have to bring the road to?
So I believe that standard is a twenty-four-foot wide road within that sixty-six feet with four inches of, or six inches of gravel.
Okay, and that's written in the county specifications?
It's written in ordinance fourteen now.
Okay.
Well, as also, the twenty-four feet has to be accompanied by a, a road district, a legal road district.
That I'm actually not one hundred percent sure on if it would be required over a road district. I know that anymore if, if you build over a certain.
What I'm getting at is to make it public.
Correct, yeah, anytime a road district.
It can't be a public road, and we can't have a standard if it's not a public road. So it has to be included in a road district, a legal road district by the state requirements and our county requirements.
Right, and the new subdivision regulations that were recently approved, any lot that's platted or any roads that are platted within a subdivision that has five or more lots is required to have a road district. There's some new certificates now on those plats that designate maintenance and road agreements to address some of these issues moving forward.
Thank you. The only reason I knew that, Mr. Chair, was because we have one of those road districts where none of the property was ever dedicated and that sort of thing. And, and it does, to make it public road, it has to be included in a road district where the people had a vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just, while Cody Sack, environmental planner, my staff's up here, there was mention of T P Gulch as the sec, as a second access. This is where T P Gulch starts, it's a locked gate by the Forest Service, and it goes through a private, private access easement, and the county cannot tell someone to go across someone's land, even in an emergency.
Understood, thank you. Further questions for, for Mr. Zog?
No.
Thank you, sir.
That, that's the road that I was stating was the, you know, you need a four-wheel drive or high clearance to go down to.
Okay.
Anyways, thank you.
Next speaker request form I had was from Alaa White Smernova.
Good morning, everyone. So as you can imagine, because of my last name, I'm Katie's mom, and I would just like to excuse me for my accent. I came to the United States in two thousand from Germany, and then in two thousand eleven to South Dakota because I'm a professor of discover mines. So you should blame me for this whole idea of bringing this to South Dakota, and I can give you an insight. So why is this happening? So in two thousand five, when Katie was the, I was at the University of Connecticut and Katie was in Connecticut, she was accepted to Juilliard. And Juilliard School, if you know where this is, right, probably, so they have a Meadowmont Summer School. And Katie spent six years every summer in this Meadowmont School, and I visited her. So this school was very different, it has over two hundred students, but every time when I was visiting them, I was surprised that it is so quiet. You don't see students, you don't see teachers, they're all private in private cabins, and that's basically Katie was able to recreate here. So, but with a big difference, instead of two hundred, they want to have only twenty. And why twenty? Because it's really hard, there were a couple of reasons for that. First thing is that it is really hard to maintain all these tuition-free students, because at Meadowmont, I paid a lot of money for Katie every summer. So here, because it was very hard for me and Katie knew it, they decided to go tuition-free. This is a huge, absolutely huge effort on their side. That's why they are now in California trying to bring money for their students. And for eight years since this effort started here in South Dakota, they didn't pay themselves a single penny. So they paid only faculty, but because of that, they are, they have constant fundraising concerts, they have all these activities, trying to write grants, all this stuff. So now about concerns. So based on my experience at Meadowmont Juilliard Summer School, I envisioned that, you know, this school will not make any trouble to residents around. And let's do a simple math. So first of all, students that come to South Dakota, they are not from South Dakota, only a few of them, this year, I think, two or three. All of them are coming from all around the country, they don't have their cards. So what Katie and Brett are planning, and they were asking me to sponsor it, to buy a van that will be able to accommodate all of them, let's say, once in a week to go to Rushmore, to show them. Otherwise, they will be studying, they will be studying twenty-four-seven, this is their goal. In, at Meadowmont, what was happening, and, you know, a person was walking around and checking how many hours each student is practicing. That was the whole idea, it's not for entertainment, this is not an entertainment camp or whatever people are saying, and about traffic. So in the past eight years, all the fundraising concerts were, were performed at Black Hills State, at, you know, in Rapid City in different locations. So they're saying, yeah, maybe we can have like up to four concerts. I don't think they will be able to even to do this, because maybe two, I don't know, it's up to them. But again, and, you know, one hundred is maximum, we're talking about maximum number that can be actually put in, in their house. I don't, I don't think even it could happen, but again, these, these are my sort of suggestions. So about the road, so if the students, they move in, let's say on this year on July third, and then move out on August third, or like earlier than that, July ninth, August third. I mean, that's it, they will be staying there, no one will be even see them, be able to see them. No one will be able to hear them because they will be in each of these practice small cottages or within the building. That's it. In Meadowmont with two hundred students, you can not hear a sound, and that, that's what is. And about food, they will, a couple of years ago, yes, last year, they just have their own guy who was just cooking hamburgers or, you know, like this stuff. I don't think they will be even traveling back and forth with this food, because it's so easy to, you know, put some stuff in the freezer and just bake it right there. Twenty people is not like two hundred. And even at Meadowmont with two hundred people, it was very simple, they just served eggs or just, you know, some sort of simple food, and students were not complaining, because they knew that they are coming to this location just to practice, to learn. And that, like Jackie said or someone else, that this is worth of a year-long practice. So about the road, I agree with all these concerns, traffic, we need to think about this road, how to meet the requirements of everyone, I mean, all the neighbors, so that it should be safe. But again, there will be not more traffic than, you know, than you can see it now, except maybe if they decide to make one or two maybe maximum concerts at their location, you know. People will go in, in two hours they'll get out, and at five o'clock or whatever they do it in, on Saturday or Sunday, there will be no schools, there will be no, you know, work hours. So it will be during the time, and they, by the way, can even sort of have, and, you know, prior to the event, they can have this, you know, agreement with everyone, the best day to do this. It's not something that, you know, would be bothering actually the neighbors. So they should work with the neighbors, they should, we should think about the road, and otherwise, I, I don't see any problems. The only benefit will be that we think about education, right? So I'm, I'm working in this academia, this system forty years, and all I'm doing is just education. That's why I was inspiring Katie and Brett, and again, it's my fault, I, I, I cannot say more than that.
Thank you, are there questions?
Questions?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I may have missed this, where would the concerts be held, inside, outside?
Inside.
Inside, okay, you have one big enough for that.
And they were doing it at, you know, at different locations, all the churches in Rapid City, and they will be still continuing. I'm sure that Brett can confirm that they probably will be doing it, you know, as they did before, at Doll Center. Usually they do it twice a year, I don't even think whether they can do it four years, times a year, because it's, it's a lot of work for these guys, they work, they just teach, but they need to prepare for it. And then they need to pay someone else to bring, let's say, cello or a pianist here to Rapid City, because we don't have these people. So we're just trying to bring this really exciting environment of Juilliard to Rapid City, that's the whole idea. And I'm really, really sympathetic to the neighbors, I understand their concerns, I understand that they are very much concerned about traffic. But again, just do simple math, there will be no literally too much traffic. Even if they plan to whatever concert, I don't think they will be doing more than two at their house. Just talk to, you know, to neighbors, there are like not too many of them, just ask them, can we do it this Saturday? I mean, that's it, twice a year, and this money will go to students who are low income, they don't have money, they are coming from all around their country. And some of these students now, after this, you know, since Katie and Brett started teaching, they are now entering the highest ranking schools in the country, music schools. Because these kids, they don't have any other opportunity to study. Juilliard is awfully expensive, all these music schools are awfully expensive. So Katie and Brett are trying to do their best in terms of bringing, you know, new generational students and, you know, educate them.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
Who's the legal owner of the?
Who's the legal owner of the property on the warranty deed?
What?
The legal owner of record on the warranty deed.
Brett Wallfish and Katie Smernova.
That being said, if he sells the property in five years to somebody else and they don't have that same philosophy, they don't rent it as good, then where are the neighbors at then?
But I don't think they're going to leave.
That's a thing. That's a thing.
I don't think they're going to leave. They, they just came here. We had a lot of conversations. And by the way, the whole terrain and the view is exactly like in Juilliard. That's why they are just, they were crazy about this location. They found it. And I remember the first day when Katie, she was very excited, said, Mom, you know, we found a lot. And that could be, you know, our investment, the whole life investment. They're not going to leave. And I'm going, I'm personally investing a lot of money, going to invest a lot of money in this Afreoms. This is only for education. And if I pass away, I, I actually am thinking to, you know, to, you know, to leave some money either to the school of mines or to these guys. So education is something that I was always thinking all my whole life. And I, I don't, I'm not paid. I was supporting them for eight years. They lived in our house at some point because they were doing construction. So it just, it's, it's only my fault, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
If you have questions, I was on the board of directors since the very first day. So if you have any questions, just please. And you take my word. There will be no really concerns for neighbors. And the neighbors, we can talk to them, Katie and Brett, I will be talking to them. So I am taking it, just, you know, my responsibility will be to promise that the neighbors will never be, you know, unhappy, honestly.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Oh.
I do have a question.
Yes, please come back.
Okay, in all fairness, then I, if you've been on the board since the inception.
Yes.
I've got to ask you the same question. Were you involved in the selection of the property?
I mean, I'm sure, I mean, they showed me this property the first time they saw it. And I said, that's great. All I can say, absolutely. And I remember it was very windy and cold in winter. So they found this property, they contacted the person, the seller. And, you know, as I said, that the property looked awesome for their goal, just to, to bring these students. And that's, that's the whole idea of, yeah.
And then a second part of that, it sounded like that you're involved in some financing or philanthropic side of this, of the building or property or something. Could you explain that too, please?
Sorry?
Philanthropic donation. You're donating some to the construction?
I'm, I'm just taking a loan to build the rest of it.
Okay. So you're building the structures that are on the property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I don't have any personal interest or benefit.
Correct. Other than being on the board. No, I didn't mean imply that.
It's just, you know, volunteering stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker request form is from Ross Rhode. Please restate that if I send your name wrong.
Yeah, it's Rhodey.
Rhodey, thank you.
And this is my wife Judy.
Okay.
We only had one form, so.
You're good.
Okay. So, um, back in 2001, my wife was pretty insistent that we need to get our little chunk of land in the hills before there's nothing left to get. And we searched and searched and we come up with a little 10 acre spot that we have at the end of Klondike. And I'm just really tickled with the land. We've been waiting to build up there someday, you know, and the, the whole area was residential. So I wasn't too concerned about dealing with something like this. And I just feel like, I don't know, I just feel like they kind of put the cart before the horse, in my opinion. I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't they done their research and got all this stuff approved ahead of time? Before they went forward with buying the land, you know, make sure that they could actually get it done. It's really disappointing. I mean, this whole area is, it's, I don't know if you've ever been up there, but it's, it's, it's an awesome area. It's a great place to, I just can't wait to live up there someday. But I can't imagine having something like this come in here. And it's just going to change the whole atmosphere, in my opinion. The road, the road's going to be a pain, total pain in the butt. And even for me, when I, when I leave the property, when I come up Klondike and I pull up to Highway 16, I am very, very careful, especially if I got a trailer on the back. Because traffic coming from Hill City back towards Rapid, when you pull up to that road, when you pull up to Klondike, you better make sure there's nobody in sight at all before you pull onto that road. Because when, there's times where I'll pull onto 16 and just as I make my decision to pull onto there, here comes traffic. And I mean, you better get on there and get on the gas because there, you don't have that much distance there. And.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Sir, uh, when did they buy the property? Just roughly.
When did we buy it?
The, the music venue.
I don't know.
We, we can ask him.
I guess my question would be is, when were the neighbors first notified?
Yeah, I do.
After the acquisition, because like you said, you buy the land. If I was going to spend that much money, I'd want to, I want my neighbors to know what I'm going to do. So I just wondered how long after the property was actually purchased, how long was it before the neighbors really knew what the true intentions?
Well, yeah, you know, I mean, and then after this is done, what's to stop future developments from going in their businesses? You know, if this is accomplished, then what's to stop the next person from coming in and building a business up there? And then it's, it's not a residential area anymore. You know, what's to stop Doug Zog from going up there and putting in a car wash? What's to stop me from going up there and running my motorcycle shop up there? You know, it's just, um, don't get me wrong, I'm very much into arts. You know, I grew up, I was in band, I was in chorus and I, my brothers are all real artistic. I have nothing against it. I just have a problem with where they're wanting to do it.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Ross, just for the record, so that it's clear, you considered the road a pain in the butt, but it's a positive pain in the butt to you. In other words, it limits the traffic to you and your property. Is that the way I read what you were trying to tell me?
Oh, yeah, the road is very, yeah.
You're saying it's a pain in the butt for both of you, the new owner and, and the existing?
If I come into the property pulling my camper, we'll take our camper up there and camp out sometimes. And if I pull onto that road with the camper, I just pray to God I can get through there without running into a vehicle coming the other way because, because I can't go anywhere. You know, and I can't get over.
All right.
You know, they pulled, I seen they did put some little pull offs up there. It's like, yeah, that's okay for a vehicle to get over, so two vehicles can pass. But if you got a pickup with a trailer coming one way and a pickup with a trailer going the other way, they're not going to pass each other, even on them pull offs, I bet.
All right. And the second part would be is there is also a continued safety issue at Highway 16.
That is.
Am I assuming correct? I listened to what you were trying to.
That is probably the most safety issue, in my opinion. And I would think if, if a venue like that, or if, if that was going to go forward, I would think, I don't know if it'd be the county or whatever, would be very, very concerned with the safety issue with Highway 16. Because not only getting off of Highway 16 to turn onto Klondike, there's no turnoff like has been stated before. A lot of times I'll pull, if I got the camper, I'll try to get over as much as I can and get into that median there. And but I can't get off the road completely, you know, pulling a camper, so.
And that, that safety issue exists for their request as well as your own property up there? That's what I'm trying to get at. So that in all fairness, what you said exists for both of you. But one, you see it as a positive versus the negative that's being reflected here.
Right.
Thank you.
I definitely, if I had young kids of, of my own up there that were having to pull out onto that road, I'd be very concerned for them.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
What I might point out, Charlie, you remember the issue we had with the pearly pit? That was the same, that median is just about the same width or even less.
Yeah, it's very.
So when I did my site inspection, I have to go towards Sharon Lake. I didn't take a right. And you got a half ton pickup, you get out there and you got cars going 75. I mean, the speed limit's 65, but they go 75.
Oh, yeah, 80.
It's just, it gets a little scary. You want to make sure that when you, when you leave there, you want to make sure that you got, you don't see anybody coming the other way.
Well, I've pulled out onto there at night, late at night. And the display at Mount Rushmore would be getting over with. And you know how traffic is coming from that. I mean, it's just vehicle after vehicle. And you'll sit there forever and you cannot pull out onto there. I mean, it's just, it's a bad spot. It really.
I agree. I totally agree.
Mr. Chair. Ron, just a point though, to be fair to both parties here, we already have a housing development that crosses that same thing, drives through the paved on 16 right now, a good sized housing development, as well as several that are planned and in the works. I just wanted to point out, there are several there that have been already approved through both boards.
Right.
Thank you.
Do you, further questions? Do you have any further comments?
Yes, I, I would.
Go ahead.
He probably didn't mention that the trailer we pull up there is eight by almost 40. You get a big crew cab pickup going on behind there. That and the road is nine to 12 feet. We're eight feet wide. I mean, if we meet somebody, somebody's going to have to back up for a long time before they can get through there. And once something like this is approved, how would we know what's happening up there and what restrictions would they have if they did? Would there be 100 people or suddenly would there be 300 people? We don't know because nobody's going to monitor that and tell them they can't do that once it happens. We bought the property many years ago. And there's been homeowners up there that have enjoyed, had, had quite enjoyment for many, many years. And we, most of them have homes on their property. We don't. We take that trailer up there and that's we go up there on weekends and, and spend some time. That would limit what we could do. We understand the passion for what they're trying to do. But they also need to enjoy, to understand the passion for why we bought the properties and why we want to live up there. And a facility like this would take that all the way from us.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you both for your comments.
Thank you.
The next speaker request form I have is from Trudy Brassfield.
Good morning. My name is Trudy Brassfield. And my husband and I have owned a property on Klondike Road since 1999. I'm going to try to keep this no emotional. We love music, everybody loves music. We passionate for it. We all want to live our lives. We don't want anybody to interrupt us. And you guys have a lot of decisions to make with all the influx we have had. I really agree with the, the statement, the cart before the horse. And I too would have really some issues with my board. This property, I do not know. I can't tell you when it was born, when it was bought. It, and maybe you can. We as landowners, I had no idea this was going on until we received our first conditional use permit that there was going to be a public hearing on September, where is that? September 27th, 2021. At that time Brett stood before you and he acknowledged he did not know that was not a county road. So nobody told him about a county road. They didn't tell him it was for a service from the first, the cattle guard to the next cattle guard. Did not know that that was private from that cattle guard onto the next, to his property. Did not know that the private residents took care of that property. Did not know that private residents put the culvert in to get across the TP Creek. All that information, he acknowledged, he didn't know. If I was going to buy a property, I would want to know what my restrictions are. And I would want everybody to know what the plan to use was. And I have a really good example of that. In 2007, I walked into the planning and zoning company department, was standing at the window. And we had owned the property since 1999. And I had a dream of putting in a wedding venue. And I was talking to the gal at the, right at, at the office and someone, and he ended up being your planning director, heard me talking and I was just asking, what would I need to do? What would be the permits? And he came out of the office and he said, I'm going to have to tell you right now, I'm really concerned. I know where Klondike Road is. And this was going to be only from the first cattle guard off of 16 onto my property, which at that time was at the second cattle guard. And he said, I will recommend denial. And basically, because of turning off of 16 with your added traffic and the added traffic, and he called it increased density. And he said, I am going to try to keep you from going through all the expanse and jumping through all the hoops right now.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
So what, what was the date that you mentioned?
The first date that we ever knew that, that they had even bought the property was when we got the notice of public hearing. And that was request for a conditional permit, September 27th in 2021. And of course, then when we got, I cannot tell you how many days do we have to receive this before? I don't know how many days did the notice come out before the, the commission meets. I'm not sure of that. Is that 10?
I'm just looking at a photo that I took and the reason I, so I took a photo, it's in the packet. I took it September the 29th, 2021, at the request of concerned citizens. So this, I just want you to know that I responded within seven days of this concern.
Sure. No, I'm talking about when, when we, your public hearing was held September 27th here at the, and, and that's the first I ever met Brett. I, I don't know that Katie was here, but he did talk. But none of the neighbors, so then we got these letters and we called. They go, we don't know what's going on. And so we did, and in response to coming to the meeting, it was the Saturday before Sunday, before Easter Sunday. I had come, anyway, it was a busy weekend. And whether that's an excuse or not, but I have been in touch with Katie through emails and I have copies of those. I have visited with her about this. And it's, this will change the nature of the living for everyone there. And in your response to the road, yes, it's, it's a tough road. But we're willing to put up with that because we felt that that would isolate us from all of the influx that's coming in. And it's, it, these, you're going to be faced, I know you're going to be faced with all this kind of stuff all the time. But this really, whether you like music, whatever, that isn't, that is the emotional plea. There's no, the fear that we have is, is of changing the whole atmosphere of this residential area. I have talked to the DOT and they are from Mike Carlson. He is also very concerned about Highway 16. And he says, I know it. I know where it's at. And he says, we're really going to have to look at that if it goes beyond this.
Questions?
Yes.
Any questions? Thank you for your comments. The next speaker request form I have is from Lisa Koschelski. My close.
Hi, I'm Lisa Koschelski. My daughter attended Rushmore Music Festival for three years when it was in Spearfish and she went up to the college. It was a very unique opportunity here in the hills. I think that the, the neighborhood, I, I don't think that the impact will be as big as, as some might fear. But I can understand concerns of the neighbors. I would, I would be happy to describe what the students' days are like, what they went through. But it was an expiring experience for my daughter. It gave her an opportunity to, to study and hear and participate in a music community that she didn't otherwise have. She's now in New York, going to college studying cello performance. She, you know, didn't, didn't have an experience quite like that, even though we're very lucky in Rapid City with the amount of music support that we do have for our youth. This was a new experience for her and it was inspiring for her. I can tell you that, that what some of the board members said is true. She went to the campus, she didn't have a car. Even though she was one of the older students, they didn't go anywhere other than in a group. These are, these are not the kids that go out and, and pull pranks and get in trouble. They're the kids that stay in their dorm room and practice their instruments and, and do their, their, their tasks set during their, their chamber groups and their private lessons. So I, I don't see a lot of extra traffic. Certainly not more than, than, you know, the, the vehicles getting them back and forth. So I don't know about the concert opportunities, but of course Brett could answer any questions on that. But I am here for questions, if you have any, about what the students' lives were like at the camp. And I think that, that it would be very similar here.
Okay, questions? Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
The next speaker request form I have is on Zoom and I think it's Rosalie S. Leeson. Are you still on?
I am. I, sorry, I wasn't really thinking about speaking, but I will tell you that I, I've been involved with the Rushmore Music Festival for probably the last five or six years, just in supporting them and appreciating the fact that they are bringing this kind of opportunity to potential professional students and students who want to go on to have, be professionals. And I have been to the site three different times now and yes, it is a bad road going in there. But I do know, I do know this, that the traffic will not be the problem that I've been listening to neighbors being concerned about. It's, especially after this summer when the A-frames are put in. The students will arrive, they will stay there. They may have a weekend outing to see Rushmore. But for the three weeks, they're generally will stay put. And then, so I, I'm, I really, I understand the neighbors not fully understanding the concept of this and with their concerns. I was on planning and zoning for fourteen years in Spearfish, so I understand the process of the public hearing, the necessity of it. And, but I do know that in this situation, the fear is much greater than the reality. And I, I just, I really, it's unfortunate that it has come to this situation that we're in today. But I do know that Katie and Brett are totally sincere in, in establishing this for a venue for the stu-, for the benefit of the students. And like Katie's mom said, education, I'm a retired educator here in Spearfish. And I, and, and it's, it's an opportunity that should not be denied because of fear, unrealistic fears. And the, and the off of sixteen, yes, absolutely, you have to be careful. And, and the road, I don't understand frankly, except it probably happened a long time ago, why that little development was even allowed with, out some kind of road improvement in the first place. However, that, it was. But if you can compromise and work with Katie and Brett on improving their section of the road that goes up to their property, they should not have to go any further than their property, then I don't see how this issue cannot be resolved. Because that to me sounds like the main issue is that road access in and out, especially with emergency concerns. And that's all viable, they are all viable concerns. But it's not unsolvable. So please, commissioners, consider the people who've lived there for a long time and the wishes of Katie and Brett, which are not, it is not a business. It is not a business. So stop saying it's a business. Anyway, consider working together on this and having it be a satisfactory solution to all concerned. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mrs. S. Leeson? Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
The next speaker I have is Brett Wallfish.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having, having me to speak. Thank you for our neighbors for expressing their concerns and for our board members and supporters who have come out today and spoken on, on me and Katie's behalf. I could go into, you know, a whole speech of introductory comments, but I'd rather take a moment just to maybe take questions immediately from the commissioners one by one and try to address concerns that you all have heard today in a way that I can provide clarity.
Questions for Mr. Wallfish.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I'll go ahead and jump in the water, Brett. There's a commercial out now that says in America you have the right to pursue your dreams. And I've heard dreams referred to in this request often by your supporters. And I can understand why. You do a tremendous service for the community in what you're doing, let alone the young folks, because the arts are important. But what if other people's dreams, and I'll use myself as an example and other thoughts? I'm a classic car guy. What if I wanted to move into a neighborhood and I decided that I wanted to have a classic car salvage yard? And because, keep these things from the crusher because that's my dreams. I don't want them crushed. Or I'm a dog lover and I want a dog kennel. That certainly affects to a great deal your neighbors. Where does yours differ from that dream?
So I, I appreciate the question and following dreams is a fundamental piece of being an American, I believe. And, and, and part of that is, you know, to bring it back to, to us, our dream of doing this and bringing what we're doing to our, to our students, it will not have any adverse react, effects whatsoever on, on our, our neighbors. And their concerns today, as Scott mentioned, have been largely unfounded and rooted just they don't understand what we do. And as they see what we're doing, they will come to realize that they won't know that we're, that we're even there most of the time. Our, during the festival, especially after the A-frame construction is complete, we will have probably less traffic during the festival than we will have the rest of the year because Katie and I won't be in and out ourselves. We won't be having, you know, friends coming over and it, it's gonna be a reduction of traffic during, during the program itself to address a concern that somebody had about, what's to say one hundred people won't become three hundred, which would create a more significant traffic concern. And we've submitted a formalized PUD overlay document. It's gonna outline exactly, word for word, what we can and what we cannot do. And if we were to do anything outside of the scope of that, we would be in violation of a county ordinance, which, well, we like to be law-abiding citizens. So that's not something that we have any intention of doing. That's why we've been upfront and, again, to address, you know, did they know what we were doing? When we put the offer on the property with the Osbonds, I had a lovely chat with Craig and Cory. And Cory mentioned to me that her grandmother had been a professional violinist and she thought what we were doing at the time was very cool. I didn't pursue, you know, formalized conversations with every neighbor. I, this is my first time building anything. So I'm definitely new to the process. Any contractor that, contractor that we've hired on the job site will tell you the same thing. I'm very forthcoming and upfront about the fact that we're learning on the construction side of things. I've never done this before. We, you know, consulted the ordinances, we consulted with the county and we followed the directives as they came to us.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
Can I ask my second question? I'll go away like a bad addict.
Go ahead, Charlie, then.
All right. Everybody'd be happy then.
Go ahead.
My second question is, it appears you're going to have some growth. And like all arts things, I would think you're, you've got somewhat fragile funding. And it's gotta include the future, not just what's going on and the size of this facility. Do you understand, Brent, what, putting a facility this size and putting, running it through this board? We have to look at the future that if you had to part with it or some, is there a plan B or something to, to share with us here? Thank you.
Sure. Well, first, the home is my personal home. Katie and I are building it in a residence that we have personally funded thanks to the inheritance of my, of my aunt who passed away three years ago from lung cancer. In the event of, of a sale, I mean, my understanding is that PUDs would travel with the property. So if somebody was to, you know, I mean, if, if, if something happened, it would still be for the Rushmore Music Festival. So, you know, even the Black Hills Symphony, a similar music organization, this PUD would not transfer to them because they are not the Rushmore Music Festival. We're not saying for any music festival, we're saying the Rushmore Music Festival. So it's gonna tie to a specific use to our organization. So on the festival side, there is no potential for transfer to my understanding of the ordinances. You know, the bed and breakfast side, that, that might transfer. And to address one of our other neighbors' concerns of people getting lost, that's a result of bad signage and in, you know, in, in some ways irresponsible ownership of, of another property owner. We have three signs that we've put up that specifically have our house number that point directly to our property. And ever since doing that, even our contractors find our, now are no longer calling me to find how to get to our house. They know exactly where it is. The signs are doing their jobs.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for consideration.
Brett, thanks for the invite up there two Saturdays ago. And Katie did an excellent job on the violin. But I think what the neighbors have done is they have read the PUD. And I'm just gonna read a couple pieces out of that PUD. It says, host up to four festival events a year. Currently, three weeks, possible to turn into six weeks. That's, that could be allowed. I mean, if we approve this today, you can go to six weeks. I don't know, you do it yesterday or tomorrow, but it, it's a, you have the permission to do that. And then it mentions a, and add a two-week winter course. And based on what I saw of the road, I don't know that I'd want to be traveling on that road in winter conditions. And then at least forty parking spots. Now, if you have forty parking spots, I assume you're gonna have forty cars. And that, I think that's a concern of the neighbors and that's why they're here today. This, it's residential, but it still has a commercial overtone, in my opinion.
Sure. So to try to, to try to hit that all at once, you know, it could, you know, I, we are definitely asking for six weeks of permission from, from, from your board. And, you know, when we were advised by, by the county office and by the staff who've done a marvelous job in guiding us through this pro-, this process, we were told, put in everything that we could ever foresee ourselves going into and becoming. So we said, well, if we were to expand, what are the ways that we would do that? Six weeks would be the maximum. It's a summer program. Anything longer than that, kids are back in school. We, they, they can't, that's not a feasible amount of time for, for students to do more than six weeks. Two weeks in the winter course, it's, you know, again, it's a, it's a dream idea that maybe it'll happen, maybe it wouldn't. But we were advised to put it into the PUD. You know, my consult, my consultation with the ordinances, I believe it says that we could have asked for up to a hundred eighty days of use. And, you know, I, I was told that sometimes these hearings become negotiations. But we didn't want to do that. We, I'm not, I, I like to be direct, I like to be to the point. I like to not waste people's time as much as possible. I didn't feel like getting into a negotiation over how many days we can do it. For six weeks, maybe up to eight. And again, that's, that, we'll have to see how we can manage the road. It wouldn't, that one would absolutely not be happening for the short-term foreseeable future until we live a couple winters there, there and see how to, how to deal with that particular issue. But, you know, we, we supplied in the PUD our absolute wish list of everything we could ever foresee ourselves going to. And for us to make any changes to that, we'd have to come back and have two more hearings with you again and go through this whole process and pay, I think, four hundred twenty, four hundred sixty dollars just to reopen an amendment process, which is time-consuming and expensive.
Well, my, I'm just gonna say that as written right here, I can't support this today, but I am definitely open to compromise in the future. That's just in respect to the neighbors. It is just one neighbor. I've got phone calls, I've got emails and I've got a, it's a hard position to put a county commissioner in, but I do have to listen to the neighbors that actually live there that, that are, that are gonna be impacted by the magnitude of what this PDU, or PDU allows.
Further questions for Mr. Wallfish? Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item?
May I ask a quick question?
No, please go ahead. We're, we're still on you if, go ahead.
So the only concerns that I've heard that, you know, I mean, there, there's the speculative concerns about, about what kind of, you know, impact people would have. But that's all speculative. There are legitimate road concerns. So what would we need to do to make the road feasible? And then if we did that, what, you know, would we have a blessing from the county to make sure that the PUD was to go through if we were to make that investment?
So the previous answer to that question was a twenty-four-foot wide road. But then there was a question about the private ownership of that road compared to city or county road districts, correct?
Correct. So Cody Sack, environmental planner. Just a couple things. One, I was talking to Brittany, so I didn't hear the question. It was if, if they post, I'm guessing like a surety to build the road, would that?
I, I think the question is, is what, what would, what would change the, the recommendation from the county from to deny the planned unit development overlay to one of recommending the planned unit overlay? And you didn't say those words specifically, so i- am I interpreting your question correctly?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
So to answer that on the spot, I would say that the, the road would have to be improved to, to county standards. If it wasn't county standards, I would say something that emergency services and all emergency services responding to the, that would respond to the property would be comfortable with. Sometimes they're fine with twenty feet, sometimes they're fine with eighteen feet. So ju- just whatever honestly emergency services is fine with. I'm guessing they'll want twenty-four feet and that's generally. But in order for it to change today, I'd say that that road either had to be built or that they'd have to post the surety on what it would cost to build that road so that if the road wasn't built, the county could bid it out and, and build that road.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
But we would have to have an estimate of that cost so that the, the person that's agreeing to it, as well as the county that's agreeing to it, would have some basis for agreement.
Correct. They, they would have to get a, a bid or an estimate and that bid or estimate would have to be approved by the county board before.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Karen.
We saw this item last fall when they were applying for the conditional use permit. And, and now it comes back to us as a, a planned unit development overlay. I'm assuming they had conversations with staff in between. And didn't the road issue come up during those conversations?
Yes, they came, and they came up prior to the meeting with the conditional use permit. So why you see it back as a, a planned unit development today was they originally applied for a conditional use permit for the three-week student course. uh, was they originally applied for a conditional use permit for the three-week student course that they were gonna put on. Uh, but it came out at the meeting and before the meeting that, well, we might, we might wanna do concerts, we might wanna do this, we might wanna do this. And and when you start hearing that as staff, it's, well, that's not, that would take a conditional use permit, that would take a conditional use permit. And anytime there's more than one conditional use permit, we recommend a, a, a PUD overlay, cause it, it'll cover it as one, it allows additional uses. Otherwise, you'd be coming back and getting a CUP for everything that you want. Um, I wasn't there for that conversation from the switching over from a CUP to a PUD. I wasn't the planner at that. Um, but I, I, I'm not one hundred percent sure if it was conveyed to the applicants that that was a, that the road was a concern. I think it was. They've, they've come in several times and talked to, and said that they've talked to Jerome about the road and his concerns with the road. So I would, I, I'd greatly assume that they were aware that the road was, was an issue at the time.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
So the PUD, you know, that's just got a lot of stuff in it. You got ten cabins, two A-frames, the house, different events, uh, the onsite education opportunities. And the way I, I'm seeing this, if we would've went in there just a little bit more conservative on what they were asking to get the neighbors to buy in, and then you wanna expand another three weeks, then you make an amendment to the PUD. And then if you wanna add more cabins, you amend the PUD, and that's a process that you can go through. But I think everything got stuck in this PUD in the very beginning, and it's really hard for the neighbors as well. That's a pretty aggressive PUD.
Correct. And, and with, and with PUDs and with CUPs, uh, like the infrastructure for the road, if, if you're putting in there that you may have this use, whether or not it's, it's something that you may do in the future, as the county looks at it, the second that that PUD is approved and it goes through the appeal process, that's an allowed use. So the four concerts a year, whether you might just do one or two, you're allowed four. You can do four. So the infrastructure needs to be there for you to allow four concerts throughout the year, not, not just, well, it, it, it may happen. The county sees it as you're approved for it, it can happen, and it probably will happen.
And that's my concern.
Further questions?
Yes, I do have one. I live out by Hill City like Charlie does, and we use that road coming into Rapid City. That thing's a racetrack in the summer. Unbelievable. I, I, to me, that's a disaster. If we built a road or got it built the way we wanted to, would the state get involved possibly in a thing like that eventually?
So eventually, yeah. Um, so, so staff did recommend to deny this without prejudice. If, if the planning commission i- is thinking about considering approving it, uh, we'd recommend to continue it uh, for amount of time to get staff conditions. And one thing staff would put into condition is that the applicants work with, work with the, the state DOT. Uh, several times, they may or, or may not require a traffic study. It's been done by the uh, planning commission before up off of uh, a service road near, near Rapid City for a food truck. Uh, they wanted a, a traffic study to know what the impact of people turning in there was. Um, I, I know from, from staff's point of view that, yeah, we would have concerns with, with sixteen as well. Uh, however, there is precedent down the road with Cosmos that doesn't have a turn lane. I mean, Cosmos has been there for a long time. I don't know if the DOT can do anything with that, but uh, there is concerns with sixteen, yeah.
Further questions, comments?
Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I've got a, a number of things I have questions on. Uh, what's your structure that you're um, gonna live in and are planning on? How many square feet are in it? Are you looking at with one of your events hosting that in that house, or is it gonna be supposedly outside? Tell me how that's gonna function?
Sure. So the, the main house, so when you look at the structure, it's the main house plus the two A-frames. The main house is, I think, forty-three hundred square feet. And then each of the A-frames is eighteen hundred square feet. So in the event, or what, if we were to have an event, so say a concert over at the house, uh, the enti, there's an entire side of the house and um, Commissioner Ross Knap was, was there just a week ago. Um, it, it's been designed to adequately serve as a concert space. So we can, you know, in terms of people, it can easily hold the hundred that we're asking for. Um, in, in terms of just people having enough space to move around, everything would be kept inside. Um, you know, maybe there'll be a, you know, on a beautiful day, some hors d'oeuvres outside, something like that. But the actual event itself would be an indoor event.
Okay. I understand that you a lot of times have uh, these events at a church or at the civic center or someplace like that. What if you didn't have any events out there?
At, at, for clarity, do you mean at our new property or at like events in town?
Your new property.
Um, we would wanna have-
That seems to be one of the, the major holdbacks is those events. So what, what if you held all your events at different locations?
How would we clarify the difference? So again, I mean, if, if, just to be, you know, as a, as a, outside of the scope of PUDs, just as a s- private citizen, you know, if I had twenty people coming, coming over to visit, how would we know that that wasn't a um, a festival event? I, I would, I would hate to s- to strike that and then have somebody get cons- uh, concerned that we're just living our lives, generally speaking, too. Um, unofficial events, we can foresee ourselves wanting one, maybe two per year, and we ask for four just as a contingency. So we'd be willing to roll that back to one or two events.
Okay. One of the things that concerns me a little bit too is a future owner. Uh, you won't be there forever. And on the one of the conceptual um, pictures that I've got here, you, when you've got your A-frames, then you've got all these different cabins, that will become a commercial operation. Th- there's no way it won't when um, when you're not there anymore.
Sure. The cabins will be, u- unlike the house, as the cabins are temporary structures, um, they will be the property of the Rushmore Music Festival. So um, you know, under the hit-by-a-bus plan, and all of a sudden something happens to me, um, first, you know, my plan is to leave that property to the organization when I am no longer on this earth. Um, I have no intention to sell before then. And if we did sell the property, then those cabins would transfer, um, well, they wouldn't transfer ownership. They would be owned by the organization. So they would be removed from the property.
Okay. Um, I happen to be a real estate broker, and unfortunately, the due diligence wasn't done at the initial process of this. Checking on access, checking on uses, um, dealing with some of the neighbors. Um, unfortunately, that didn't happen. And I think that that's kind of an issue there too. Um, to improve that road to county standards will be beyond anyone's financial ability to put a twenty-four-foot road in that. Um, that's just, if it has to go to that.
Could we have the opportunity to explore costs on that? Sorry to cut you off.
Oh, that, that's fine. I, I drove out there this morning to um, take a look at things. And yeah, the road needs a, a little improvement there. And I agree with um, Highway sixteen is a crazy road uh, all summer long. There's not any place, not that that couldn't, you know, if there's two events that uh, are taking place, you know, I think we do it all the time with road construction, with bridges and stuff, that you stop traffic here on this end, and you have somebody out there. I mean, I think that that could be overcome with the road itself outside of the access off of Highway sixteen. Um, so that doesn't concern me so much. But my biggest concern is that, yes, it, it would change the the whole nature of that neighborhood with just looking at the structures. I have to, with full disclosure, I have two teenagers that both started out in with cello and violin for a year, unfortunately. Um, so they didn't have a long career in it. But uh, that's one of the things that when I look at um, that area out there, and I know that the, that type of music students are not gonna make a lot of noise, future use of that is one of my concerns on it too.
And at, so to, to speak to the road, I, like I said before, it would be nice to have the opportunity to, to bid that out. You know, we have a wonderful excavation team that's already done work for us. So we can quickly get a, you know, we, we, we can already, we can get a bid from them to widen the entire road and see what they can do to help with tho- with those costs and making it uh, potentially viable solution. Uh, I've also shared the concerns of the narrowness of the road. That's why we put the pull-offs there, because I didn't wanna be driving myself down that road. I felt unsafe before those pull-offs were there, um, with how narrow it was. And as soon as I learned that we were, you know, within our rights to improve it, we, we did. Um, cause I don't want my friends, my family backing up even when there's no event going on. And I was kind of appalled that, you know, that was so narrow. And I said, you know what? If I'm legally allowed to, to, to do this, and there's a right of access through the easement to improve the road, um, why not, you know, we, we, we have a responsibility to our, our friends, our families, our neighbors, to make our community safer for everybody. Um, so if this is another improvement that would, you know, that would be a county condition for us to meet in order to grant this PUD, uh, I would um, I would urge you to give us the opportunity. We have another hearing, I believe, on uh, May third, if my dates are correct, uh, for a secondary hearing with, with the commissioners. So to give us the opportunity to at least bid that out and provide, you know, an assurance if that, if that's something that's feasible uh, to make possible. Going to your other concern, um, on, sorry, what was the last part of your statement? I, I forgot it.
No, I think it was emergency services on, as far as having traffic control during an event.
Sure. And we'd be open to that. I mean, if, if that, again, if that was a condition for, you know, events that had over a cer, over a minimum number of people to be met, we would be happy to um, to make that work.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Question from Cody.
Go ahead.
Has anybody put a pencil to what a road would cost approximately?
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner.
Completely out of sight?
I, I'm honestly not sure. I, I, we don't do that in our office. Um, that'd honestly be between the landowner and the, and the contractor. Um, to, to build the road, uh, I think a county standard road at twenty-four feet built to ordinance fourteen can, is, can be pretty expensive, yes.
I, my thinking is, y- your, your thing is, we don't wanna do this at this point because of the road. But if the road is not even realistic, where are we going?
Well, so th- that's why staff would say that if, if a, if a county standard road wasn't, wasn't feasible, I believe that they may have to get some variances through county board to build it to lessen standards. I would say that any standard that emergency services was fine with, staff could, could be on board with. Um, I believe that the Board of Commissioners not speaking for them would, would be in favor of it as well. Um, to give the applicant some options, but uh, if, if the road isn't improved and it's not feasible, staff doesn't believe that the road meets the infrastructure requirements for the uses, but it'd be ultimately up to the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners to make that decision if,
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
So assuming that the road wasn't the problem, but I did hear if we had, that we could accommodate a hundred people in the concert hall, and then you got the owners and maybe the B and B and, and maybe vis, uh, with that being said, I also heard, well, there's four people per car, so that's twenty-four cars, but, or twenty-five cars. But what if there was one person per car and you had a hundred cars? That's still gonna have a major impact on the integrity of the community. It's not gonna be what people bought into in nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand and one. And I I'm going back to people's property rights. Everybody's got property rights, but you know, the, the owners that are here today were there before this venue. And I, and I have to really think about their property rights. Because I do think there's gonna be, if this goes forward as planned, I, I see a, a, a change in the neighborhood, not what they bought into twenty, thirty years ago.
So if I, if I can respond to that, um, respectfully speaking, sir, um, you know, we purchased seventeen acres of land. My wife and I, we currently live on six acres. And when we bought our current six acres, one of the, the selling points that are, that the buyer told us was, you know, one of the beautiful things is for that six acres that you own, nobody can touch it. And for the seventeen acres that we own, nobody can touch it. And for the, you know, ten acres that, or twenty acres or forty acres that our neighbors own, nobody can touch it. But what we do with our own land, so long as it doesn't impede upon their enjoyment, shouldn't be, you know, should, should be allowed, because that's based on the ordinances and, and the growth of our community. Um, I, I believe strongly that, you know, when you want to control how something develops, you need to own it yourself.
Chair.
Go ahead.
I, this is zoned agricultural?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So in an agricultural district, they wouldn't have to ask our permission to do animal and poultry husbandry? Um, like they said, the, the childcare facilities, nurseries and greenhouses, sawmill. I mean, there are a lot of uses under agriculture where they wouldn't have to ask us any permission.
Correct. And that's, that's the same in any zoning district. Um, there's uses by right in every zoning district. Those are what the planning commission who helps, who makes that recommendation to the board when the, the board approves ordinances, that the planning commission, the Board of Commissioners feel is a reasonable use in that area. Um, and that there's, and then there's certain infrastructure requirements. So, yes, unfortunately, they could do a a daycare and be on a twelve-foot wide road that we don't really, we can't really say anything to, because the road's there, it's an allowed use. If they came in for a building permit, we'd have to allow it. However, for um, off-season musical performance concerts, um, concerts aren't an allowed use in agriculture district. So um, we've had this issue in the past, e- even in the past couple months with conditional use permits and PUDs meeting the infrastructure requirements. Um, and that's where staff's at right now, is it doesn't believe that it can meet the infrastructure requirements currently for an additional allowed use in that zoning district.
If, well, I, I guess I'm, I'd come back to, and I'm, I would keep thinking of if someone came in and, and they wanted to, you know, take this huge piece of property with all of these other properties and, and subdivide it, um, they would be required to put in a, a road meeting county standards that would uh, service and access all of the separate parcels that are being considered and provide easements and, and the whole lot. And in this instance, we have, we have all of these parcels of property that were serviced by uh, a road that was built a long time ago before any of this stuff was written down and people were making such decisions. Um, and I'm not hearing today, I haven't heard a single person that said that they're against, you know, the, the uh, work that this, these folks are doing. And, and it has everything to do with the safety um, at the end of this road. Um, that's, that's less than standards. So um, I, I won't be in favor of this as, as well, but it's, it's simply because of the, the safety aspect of this. And, and that's where, that's where I'm, I'm coming from. I've heard that maybe, maybe two kids from the, from Rapid City or the surrounding area would be aware of it. And I'm thinking to myself, all right, so the rest of the kids are from across the nation. They come here, they're at their end of this road. Hmm, a- and they're not sure, a- a- they're being, they're gonna be put into a situation, and, and I hear that this is overblown all the time, that kind of thing. But we've had several scenarios here in the recent years where there's been, where there's been fires, where it's been hard to get out of places and, and get access and those types of things. So as a board member, I'm thinking of those items from the safety standpoint. The people that live there all day, every day, including the wolfish's, will be very aware of those things and, and um, a- and probably have the opportunity to um, y- you know, have a little bit more of an educated response to such things. But uh, I, I, I would be concerned about um, the larger events and, and having people there that are, that are not familiar with the the lay of the land, so to say, and, and, and those types of items. And so for, for those reasons, I, I, I'm in agreement with uh, staff's recommendation on this item.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I'd have to say the same thing. And, and I realize an alternative's on the table here about proposing uh, and bidding the possibility of upgrading this road. And I think we're dealing with enough property in different venues of the ownership of the property that it could take a significant amount of time. You're gonna have everything from uh, um, the National Forest Service to uh, the access agreement, the one gentleman referred to. You've got a lot of review before you can even put the bid together, see how much it's gonna cost. And for that matter, I wouldn't then support a, a continuous. I'm, I'm more in favor of supporting what the staff's recommendation is too. Thank you.
M- Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
But I, you know, I, I still think there's gotta be more dialogue between the owners and the Rushmore Music Festival. I, I think there's a solution out there, and I think there's a compromise, but I don't, uh, I don't see it the way it's presented to us today. So, you know, there again, I've already said I can't support the way it is, as written.
Additional comments, questions? Um, does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Looks like we have one. Please come forth. Again, state your name.
Do you have their current building permit?
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Yes, they've submitted a building permit for the residence. Uh, Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Yes, they've submitted a building permit for the residence.
Can you bring that up somewhere so everybody can see it, or can you?
I cannot. You'd have to fill out a records request up at.
Okay, well, I looked it up myself.
The county board.
But I guess the, the main house is forty-three hundred square feet, is that correct?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Good.
I, I believe.
Well, that's, that's what he stated.
That's what he stated, yes.
Okay. So when you do evaluation for a building permit, do you know how that goes?
I do, yes.
Can you state how that goes, Tony?
It's based off of overall square footage of the property, finished base, unfinished base, decks. It's all priced at a different rate, and then it's a percentage of that.
But it's times like a hundred and thirty average square foot or per square foot?
I believe right now finished square feet is a hundred and fifty-seven dollars per square foot, and then it's a percentage of that.
So when they apply for that permit, is that what the completed square footage is then? Is that what they're charged, or I guess I don't, not sure?
So they are charged for what they apply for. At the time, they have not appl- applied for the A-frames. They just applied for the main structure.
Well, their valuation came up two hundred and twelve thousand on the construction permit?
So.
So how does that?
So.
Equate with four, thirty-three hundred square feet?
So there is, there's two ways to do, um.
Where, where are you going with the questioning, I guess is my.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I don't know who else asked this question too.
Okay.
Except for staff.
I just think that these questions would maybe be better addressed upstairs at the counter instead of the, the board here. Um, to answer, I think the quick answer to your question is, um, if I understand where you're going, is, is that th- that, um, building permits are based off of valuations. Everyone in this room probably understands that those valuations are, are less than maybe what market value is going for right now. And then the second part is, is that if, if they come in and they want, that, in order to build those other things, they gotta come back in for additional building permits.
Correct, yes. And, and there, sorry, there's, there's two ways to value a permit. There's the regular square footage, but there's also allows for a contractor's bid, so they have to do a, a contractor's bid. If they submit us that to us, we go by that information. So there's two ways. So if it was, if, if they have a contractor's bid, and I, I don't know how the, that specific permit was, was done. If it was done by our square footage or a contractor's bid, I'd have to look into that. If their contractor's bid came at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that's what we go by.
I just wanna make sure that the facts don't get misstated in this meeting and that you get exactly what you're asking for. I think that that would be better, um.
It just seemed very undervalued to me, like a third of probably what it should be.
I, I would submit to you, if you look at the entire list, the whole list is, i- is that and, and not probably in line with market value.
That's all I had, thanks.
I could make a general, that's a generalized statement. Additional questions?
May, may I ask one more?
Go ahead.
So I, 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 I know you are all moving, uh, making your way towards, uh, a motion to not approve our P U D today. Um, would that, so, uh, two, two, two clarifications. One, would that negate our next hearing, or would we have another hearing? And then what, assuming that we have, uh, you know, one more hearing, what can we do, you know, can, you know, if we can get the proper bids in place before next, before next hearing to have the road adequately approved at a price point that we are, um, comfortable taking on, then is that something that we can put back onto the table, maybe a conditional approval, um, or a conditional recommendation for the next hearing?
Okay, so again, Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, uh, the motion would be to deny without prejudice, which would mean that, um, any, anytime there's a motion without prejudice, it, it means that there's something missing with the application or something that the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners want fixed. Um, if that's fixed, uh, then you can come in under the same application that you applied for, you would just have to send out new letters and post a new sign for the new meeting dates. Um, for negating the next meeting, it'll still go to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, next week, correct, next Tuesday. Um, if the Board of Commissioners wish to approve it, uh, a- against the Planning Commission's recommendation, staff at that time would recommend that that meeting, that it be continued, so staff could write conditions for that approval. Um, or the, the Planning Commission, if they, if they see fit, can, uh, recommend to continue if they wanna see a- anything to do with the road, if they wanna see bids or any, a- anything like that, to see if the applicant's gonna address it, this can be continued as well. Which if it's continued at this meeting, it'll most likely be continued at the Board of Commissioners meeting as well.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
So it's important to know that even if that road's improved, that the P U D is not guaranteed.
Correct, um, that would just take care of, of staff's concerns with the road. If the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners, uh, still feel that the uses would be, um, detrimental to the area or nuisance or safety or anything like that, it could still be denied. By, by no means does, does the, the road being approved grant automatic approval of, of the next meeting or of the permit.
May I ask one more question and, and follow up to that?
Go ahead.
Um, to understand procedure on this, um, assuming we could have the road up to a point where the staff could at least make, make the recom- recommendation based on that, um, does the county, you know, Planning Commission and Board, do they make their decisions based on, um, what is popular or what is in the ordinances?
Who is the question directed to?
Uh, who, maybe to the Board Chair or anybody who, um, can best answer it.
I will, um, respond this way. There are numerous instances where the Planning Commission, um, does things um, against the recommendation of staff. Um, there are, um, more times than not, um, things are in line with staff, but it is not one way or the other. Everyone up on this board gets to make up their own decision based on all of the items and the facts that are put in front of them.
Thank you.
Please come forth.
I have a very quick question. I'm trying to understand everyone's opinion, and I can see in which direction you are going. So I'm just trying to understand at which point you would be able to agree with the whole project. Does it mean that, I, I mean, the road is just one concern, and I think Brad addressed it already. Uh, Route sixteen i- is just another, and I'm sure that we can address it. So then, uh, safety, so if the road is done, then it will improve safety for the whole area. That's one thing. So, uh, now we're left with only sort of private um, concerns of the neighbors. Does it mean that instead of four concerts per year, you would like to have two or just none? Or does it mean that instead of six weeks, we can look for three weeks? Uh, would this solve the problem? Because if we talk about three weeks in and out and they, they are locked, that's it, right? The most concern is, I understand this notion that there would be, you know, concerts up to one hundred people. And again, one hundred is just maximum. So in the past eight years, these guys were planning concerts all around the Rapid City and South Dakota. They were able to allocate these concerts over there. So if they have one or two concerts at their property, would it satisfy the neighbors? That's what I'm trying to, you know, to understand.
Mr. Chair, can I try to answer that?
Go ahead.
And I think you should be addressing that to the neighbors.
Yes.
Cause this is, this is where we make our decisions. We're trying to,
Yes.
We're trying to do a balancing act, you know, what, what can we do to make everything work out? And so I think if this would have happened a year or two years ago, uh, things would have been a little bit different. But going forward, I would work with the neighbors and say, what do you think? Take baby steps and then work, and then gain some faith, and then take another step and another step. But I think this is taking a giant step instead of a baby step. That's the way I see it.
Yes, and I agree, we need to work with the neighbors just to explain them a little bit more what's happening, and, you know, basically, the safety concerns and private, uh, property concerns should be absolutely addressed, and we will be working with.
And I, I might point out that I think the neighbors, when they, if I talk to all the landowners, they kinda like going in on that trail. And I don't know that they'd want a twenty-four-foot road. I, that would change the integrity of the neighborhood.
Right, but that's what, you know, a couple of people were saying here, they will not notice it, honestly. They will not. It's, it's their perception in their head that, you know, oh, this is business coming in, there will be like thousands of millions of people, this will all change the environment. The environment, considering, you know, a bunch of cars or, you know, a gas station or something. This is not going to change the environment.
But being fair, and I'm assuming that normally real estate holding is our most valuable asset as a individual. And so you're talking about their most valuable asset, probably.
Right.
And so I'd be, I don't blame them for getting all concerned.
I, I agree, I agree completely with all the concerns of the neighbors. I believe that we need to address them. And just, uh, Brad will absolutely address it. I'll try to, uh, talk to the neighbors as well, because I didn't have time on to talk to them. And again, I am a new person, so I'm more on education side rather than, you know, real estate properties, so that's.
I'll be the first to admit that Saturday that I went and I heard Katie play, it was awesome. I mean, it was awesome.
But the most important is just to convince neighbors that this will not harm them. That's the most important. And I'm sure that they, they don't believe at this point. Uh, and it just happened recently, because before that we had all the letters of support in favor. But now last minute, last week, basically, literally, we're just getting this negative concerns and, and just end where, where it happens. So we, we just need to work with our neighbors, and I'm sure that, uh, we can come to consensus, some sort of solving these problems, and I am sure that i- it just should be, uh, discussed and just will come to a positive conclusion. Yes, thank you so much, guys.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? One more.
Trudy Rassfield again. Again, we have been misled so long on this. It was one, three weeks, then it turned into a six weeks. It was one concert, and it's, that is why we are so skeptical about what is gonna happen here. So I just look at the wording that's used in their P, in what they proposed. It's intend, hasn't happened yet. In the future, at least forty parking spots. All of this, maybe they were advised to put this in, and that's what they say, but that allows this thing to explode. Thank you.
Wanna make sure there's due diligence here. Everyone's had a chance to speak. Any other comments? Please come forward.
I just wanted to, uh, comment that it seems like this whole meeting on this kinda got turned into a road issue. But I don't think that's what it's about for all of us, for all the residential people there. It's not the road. We just want it to stay a residential area. We don't want it turned into a business area. And you can call it whatever you want, but it's, it's a business. And it's not just a small business. I mean, I would consider it a fairly large business. So I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, it's all, it's, there's a lot of questions being asked, well, what if we do this? If we do this to the road, you know, is this gonna make it more acceptable? It's not acceptable, really. Not in my opinion, anyway. Um, I just want you guys to realize that there's more feelings to this than just a road issue. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. You'd like to speak again? If you're gonna talk, please come forward.
May I make her a quick reply?
Um, I got, I got Allah, then I'll come back to you.
I just about business. First of all, this is not business, and it is not large business. By definition, large business involves over five hundred people. How many people are involved in this business? Five, actually, two of them. Uh, the board members, you know, so this is not business, guys. This is an educational effort to bring students, and again, we can come to consensus. If this is too many, you know, we can always discuss it. If it's just too many, don't be concerned about it, guys. It's just easy to, to solve this problem. And for eight years, we were just, you know, trying to use all the facilities around the state, and just, it was pretty successful, so, you know, it's just not about big, big, uh, business. Just please don't use this word. It's not business.
Thank you for your comments. Go ahead, Mr. Offish.
So, so what I'd like to kinda put, put out on the record, um, the previous speaker before, before, uh, Allah stated, um, you know, we, I, I'm coming to you today to say, what can we do to make this P U D a viable solution, to make this prod- prod- project go through? And I'm being urged by, you know, y- your, your, your board to consult with our neighbors and see what would, what they would be agreeable to, because three weeks, six weeks, but at what point is it obstructionist entirely, where it doesn't matter what we ask for, uh, you know, which is what our, the previous speaker just, just stated? Is that it doesn't matter what we ask for. There is no way that they will ever, um, provide a blessing towards what we're trying to produce here, um, which is just creating an environment of growth and musical training for, you know, incredibly, incredibly talented young, driven students. I mean, these are your model citizens. Um, I'm here in California, which is why I'm on Zoom right now, and we just played a concert and, uh, to, to raise funds for, for this. And we had one of our former students join us. She's about to go to Yale in the fall. I mean, this is the kind of students that we work with. Um, you know, uh, Lisa Coachelsi- Coach, Coachelski, uh, her, her daughter Megan spent three summers with us, and she's now, uh, studying cello performance in college. We've had numerous students come through our programs and become the first in their families to go to college. And at what point is it that our neighbors' concerns are entirely something that we can never change? So we can change a road, but we can't, you know, I mean, how many times do I have to take somebody out for, or attempt to, you know, have coffee with somebody, a drink with somebody for, for a futile effort? And I'd like to, you know, state that, 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 that answer was entirely obstructionist towards the growth that we're trying to provide. Um, and we have P U D overlays, we have ordinances, we have laws and regulations and zonings that aren't, they're, they're built to allow the freedom of the American dream and system. So un, you know, up until the point that you're encroaching on somebody else's right to do the same. And what we're proposing is alternatives to not encroach on their right to do the same, but to make what we're doing safe and, and, and harmless. So that's what I'd like to leave you with.
Thank you for your comments.
It, it's my understanding at this point that if the road situation was taken care of, that the staff would approve this. That's, that's the way it would work.
Sorry, what was the, Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, what was the, what was the question?
So at this, at this point, if we build it, or they build an acceptable road, at that point, the staff would say, okay, we would be for this.
So, short answer would be, y- yes, staff's recommendation would change. Staff's concern is with the infrastructure going, uh, to the property. However, th- that recommendation was based off of those seven criteria. It's actually fourteen, so seven for the P U D, seven for the, the C U P. To staff, that would meet the requirements. Uh, to make it a, a, a safer road would be to improve it. However, if the Planning Commission or the Board find that the use itself actually being on the property, being ran, the use itself created a nuisance for the neighboring properties, that would be the determination by the Planning Commission and the Board. So the, the Planning Commission, the Board can have a, a totally different opinion than staff, and honestly, the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners are, are the opinion that truly matters.
Right, but the point I'm getting at is if they were to do that, it would come back then again to us.
Correct.
And then here we would be with a different set of problems.
Different set of details as well.
Yes.
So I, I mean, there were some questions with regards to, you know, you know, what could be done, what assurances could be done, all of those things. On, and sitting up here, the, the only thing I have is the information in this, what's been, what's being proposed, um, and, and what's being, you know, written down. Um, there's, there's a lot of talking that happens, but ultimately, m- my decisions are based off what's written down in this thing, and what's, what, what, what happens as a result of the decisions that are made at this board, that directs my, that directs my decisions on things accordingly. Anyone else? Please come forward, sir. State your name for the record.
I'm Bob White. Um, I'm the husband of this lady back here. One, I live in Stafford on a. When, I live in Stafford on a eighteen, uh, foot road. And the, across the street is a campground that has maybe two thousand residents. And half of them go down the road, eighteen foot. Uh, I have a CSA, community sport agriculture. And, uh, this is they park on the road. I don't see any problem with having an eighteen foot road. You know? All the traffic I have, or all the traffic I get. Eighteen foot road. That's it.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Do you have an eighteen foot road here?
Do I have an eighteen foot road where?
In the county.
I'm sure that there's eighteen foot roads everywhere in the county.
Right. Okay. But you just said a twenty-four foot road.
So the question was posed to county staff on what, um, road specifics. Um, they would use to move forward or they, or, or gain staff's support for, for this item. And, and those specifications were given from section ordinance fourteen. County road standards.
Correct.
And so that, that was, that, that's what was, that's what was said in the, in the meeting. But there's all kinds of roads throughout the entire county that are, that are less than twenty-four feet.
Okay. Maybe an eighteen, eighteen foot road would be sufficient.
We, we don't make that call.
So, so Cody Sack, environmental planner, staff would say that staff never goes against our, our ordinance or our subranks for road width. However, um, the, the minimum we would say that we'd want to see is what would be comfortable with emergency services. Granted, they may have to get some variances and some additional approval from the board of commissioners to do that. But staff would, would want to see a twenty-four foot wide road. Uh, the board of commissioners doesn't always agree with that, but staff would make the recommendation. To them, speaking in future, on hypotheticals, that it would be built to what emergency services would be comfortable with to get in and out, people in and out.
I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Please come forward.
Morning once again, Scott Schutz. Um, just for point of clarification, the PUD recommendation was to deny it to, without prejudice to bringing it again. And as I read it, the, the denial was based on the road condition. I didn't see anything else in there as an, uh, impediment to proceeding. Um, so as a point of clarification, are, are we on that right now? So that if we do come back with a proposal for making that road safe, whether it's to the county standard of twenty-four or something less because of the, uh, emergency services approving it for that area, given its use and all the issues here. Are we good with doing that? Or is there, are you telling me that the board here would be looking at things beyond that?
I can't speak for, uh, everyone on the board with respect to those items. New set of details would come forward in, in this packet and each person up on this board would get to make their decision accordingly. So I, I, I'm not going to speculate, I guess, for everyone's benefit.
Right now, the staff's looked at it, as I understand it, and they've looked at all the issues involved. And the only thing that we're, uh, concerned about, at least the staff at this point for this meeting, is the road and the safety of the road. Is it the process here that we reopen the whole thing into complaints that they just don't like the view of it and how it affects the community? Or are we more focused on the ordinance and, and what's allowed in an ag zoning district?
Go ahead, Cody.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. So cur- currently as it sits, the, the request. So if they came back with, with the road improvements, um, s- staff's recommendation would be for approval. However, that would come with a set of conditions. Um, and the set of conditions may not be exactly what they, what they requested. It might be two concerts, it might be one, it might be none. That's honestly up to, up to the board or, and the, and the planning commission. Um, but to, to sit here and, and dictate what's could happen in the future, I can't really say that. If it was currently now, I, as, if the road was improved, uh, county standards are approved by emergency services. The staff report would have looked much, much different, uh, but it wasn't, it would have came with, I'm guessing, a lot of conditions. And I can't promise that it'll be exactly what you requested. Um, I, I can never guarantee that.
But based on what you've had so far, the only impetus or the only problem with the approval from your perspective was the road.
Correct. Um, with, with staff's determination, most of those uses were within, within a confined structure. So staff's determination was that the, the uses, if they were conducted inside the structure and, and didn't create a nuisance, that one of those conditions of the seven conditions was met. Um, the board could think differently though, but staff, that's what staff's recommendation would, would be in that criteria, that seven criteria.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. One more? I want to make sure that you, you got your fair shake to, to talk. Go ahead.
I, I have a thought about this three versus six, uh, weeks. So you can compare it to a daycare, right? As I understand, uh, this property allows to have a daycare, right? But in daycare, you bring kids in and out every day. This time, if the, the kids are in, they will stay there, they will be out in three to six weeks. And again, six weeks, it's, it's a big, you know, sign because they don't have money to support this for six weeks. The only problem is basically these concerts. So we probably need to consider this, discuss it with everyone. How many concerts per year, one, two, three, four are allowed by uh, the, um, sort of, you know, are good to keep the privacy of the neighbors. That, is it, is it correct?
You're asking a question if I understand what your neighbors is going, are going to think if they're okay or not okay with?
Will it be sufficient, uh, to proceed? Uh, if, uh, for example, neighbors agreed, agree with two concerts versus four per year? Or three versus four? That, that's basically, that's where we are at, right? So we agreed that we can fix the road. Uh, we agreed that these three versus six weeks doesn't matter at all because this is basically much better than daycare, right? And the only thing we're left with is basically these concerts where people are saying, oh, you know, there are, uh, chorus, one hundred chorus. That, that's basically, is it correct?
There's a lot, there's a lot of comments and there's a lot of opinions by various people that have been stated today.
I know, but this is.
I'm not going to speculate on what your neighbors, uh, think that something will or will not be acceptable.
I'm just, I, I'm just trying to analyze what is happening. So it looks like, uh, these concerts are the most concerned.
Don't, I, I would not say that that may or may not be what's most concerning to your neighbors. I, I can't speak for them.
Yeah, we, we need just to talk to them. Thank you so much. I promise this is my last comment.
Thank you for your comments.
Staff's recommendation, uh, is to deny planned unit development overlay PU twenty-two dash zero six without prejudice until Klondike Road is improved.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
Move to proof staff recommendations.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Motion and second, uh, to deny, um, planned unit development overlay PU twenty-two dash zero six without prejudice. Uh, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We are on item fifteen, but, uh, I would suggest that we take a five or ten minute, uh, recess. Um, let's make it uh, ten minutes and we'll start back up at twelve thirty. It's twelve thirty, let's, uh, let's pick this back up. Uh, we are on item fifteen, ordinance amendment OA twenty-two dash zero one.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item fifteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-two dash zero one. It is to add section three twenty-one, the hard rock mining ordinance to Pennington County zoning ordinance. Do you want to go through this or how, how do you want to?
Um, so I, I, um, I, this is the, our first time reviewing the rewrite from staff's perspective, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, knowing that, I, I spent time reviewing this and have redlined comments that I think that I would like to uh, have considered. I also have two speaker request forms here, but are they no longer in attendance?
I, I don't believe so. I, I spoke with one and told her, and told her that she could get a copy of the ordinance up at, um, the office and, and to ask them for our PLZ email to email any comments that she may have on it.
Okay, and then one of the, the persons that was here created this map and we're supposed to, they wanted us to have a copy of this, correct? Okay. So what I would propose then is, is that we, we go through this. Um, uh, comments from staff are, 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 uh, everyone on the board. Um, we can go through these quick, um, they can get added, um, digested by staff and then either incorporated or, or reviewed, uh, knowing that our state's attorney is out today. Uh, she can review them for inclusion and then this comes back. Um, your guys are proposing at the end of May, correct?
Correct, yes. And, and if you want, I can go through, um, a, a lot of it's the same, but there are some additions and deletions that staff has, has made. Would you like staff to go through what was, what was changed based off of that conversation?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so for section A, um, the big change came, sorry, I gotta find it. The, uh, there's a couple of big changes in the section. One is, um, an exemption for subsurface hard rock mining operations. We met with, uh, Mark Bauron from, uh, he was a gentleman who spoke at, at that first meeting. He's a professor over at School of Mines. Uh, based off of conversations with him, he thought it'd be better to, um, deviate the difference between a surface mine and a subsurface mine. Um, and that if we wanted to regulate subsurface mines, it should probably be under a different organ, ordinance if we want to to regulate it because it has totally different federal regulations and state regulations than what um, most mining operations are in Pennington County.
Okay.
And then the second big change was, uh, there was, uh, some concern with, uh, the word for patented mining claim, that if you're a patented mining claim, it didn't apply to you. There's some different, um, determinations from the courts on patented and unpatented mining claims. And if, if the unpatented still technically has rights of a patented mining claim. Uh, in meeting with, uh, Mark, uh, he told us that it'd be best to just take that out. And if you have a, if you have a mining claim, um, that it, a mining claim is a mining claim and it should be allowed to to have a right to, to mine on that property. So the patented was taking out, so it doesn't differentiate between a property that's unpatented and a property that is patented.
Okay.
May I ask Cody a question on that?
What?
Um, on a patented one though, will we have a different set of instructions on what we're reviewing or, or allowed to consider?
Uh, that I'm not one hundred percent sure. That'd be a question for, for Megan. And unfortunately, Megan just didn't get the opportunity to, to review this before she had a, a family emergency. Um, so some of that will, I can, I'll write that down.
It'd be fine. I, I realize they're both structured, or structured different. Thank you.
Go ahead.
It's my understanding from what I've read over the years, that there have been no patented mining claims since nineteen ninety-four issued by the federal government. All the, all the patented claims now would be before that, we would be working on grandfather things.
That's correct. So the, what Megan and I figured out through research and meeting with Mark is that even unpatented mining claims have certain rights to, for, for mining, even though it's unpatented. So if you, if you say patented mining claims have all the right to mine without me, without having to meet these requirements for zoning. And then you say, well, unpatented mining claims, you have to meet the zoning requirements, even though law states that you have, have some of the same rights, it, it would create some legal issues in the future. So we just took that, that out of there and if you're a mining claim, a recognized mining claim.
In definitions, why don't you have mining claim?
Uh, I can add that a lot of those definitions, we, we tried, um, through conversations with, with staff and with some other people. Um, staff tried to mimic what, um, the state requires. Cause we're, we're kind of limited on what us as a county can actually regulate when it comes to mining. Um, we don't necessarily have, um, we don't occupy that field the state and the feds do. So I took a lot of the definitions from, from the state website, but I can add.
We, we, uh, in A, we talk about mining claims and all that, and then you get into definitions, doesn't say anything. That was my only thought on the thing.
Yes, the staff will add a, add a definition for mining claim.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So Cody, uh, unpatented mining claim, the applicant has the right to mine that, if I understand. But they don't have fee simple title to the property.
Right.
They only have the right to mine through a permit, I think with the Forest Service. If, if it's on federal property, which it probably is, then do they have certain requirements that they have to do each year? To keep that an active, unpatented mining claim?
I, I'm not one hundred percent sure on that. I might have to wait for Megan to get back on, on that one. Um, so for, when it comes to, for, for our ordinance purposes, the, the mining for patented or unplanned and mining claims are just mining claims now. The only, the only way we differentiate them in the ordinance is for zoning purposes. So if, if you're a mining claim or recognized mining claim, um, you don't have to i- if you aren't a mining claim, you have to be in one of these zoning districts. If you are a mining claim, you're exempt from the zoning district, just not the rest of, of the ordinance. I think some people got that confused, um, some members of the public got that confused at the last meeting. Was that if you were a mining claim, you were exempt from the whole ordinance? It was just the zoning requirements. Um, so suburban residential property that's a ma- mining claim could theoretically mine.
Okay.
For section, every, for section D and C, those stayed the same. Section D, the definitions changed. Um, what you, what you currently see here, actually in the, in the zoning ordinance, we did have some definitions that weren't in the ordinance. Um, and there, those were taken out. So if they don't actually appear in the ordinance, those definitions were taken out. Um, and then staff, the ones, the definitions that were in the, in the ordinance, uh, staff took the state's, the state's definition for those, so that we wouldn't be in conflict with, with the state. So is there any, any questions on definitions or?
No, I have a list of, uh, of comments that I have as a result of review in the whole document. I was, um, just, I think just keep going through your, um, the, the, the main items that had changed from the previous draft that were done, and then we'll go through the written comments.
Didn't want me to question, I, there was one definition, I just, um, your abandonment without intention to resume, and I wrote in, who decides and notices? Whether that's pertinent or not, I don't know. In other words, it really doesn't claim who decides, whether they decide they're not going to continue on, or we see them as not continuing on. It's a little vague.
Um, I can work with, uh, with the state and Megan on seeing, because that, that definition comes from the state. So I guess I'm not sure if it's the state making that determination or, or, or not.
Yes, that, it was just a little vague to me.
Maybe we should shift gears here and, and, uh, just go with the questions that the board has, knowing that we'll redo this again. Are you guys good with that? I'm, if we all read this?
Are we gonna go page by page? Are you saying let him go through and then we'll go over the?
Um, well.
Didn't understand that.
I understood the comments that were, were made and I, I just, I changed my mind here thinking, uh, we'll have questions on the ones that we, we understand were changed. And maybe we should just spend time on those instead of him explaining every, everything that was updated. Are you guys, any concerns with that from anyone here? Okay, then I, you okay with me changing gears on that?
Nope, absolutely.
All right, so, um, I think, um, it's probably better just to go page by page quick. This, it'll go quicker than everyone thinks. So on the first page, um, are, are there any comments, questions? My comments would be the, uh, formatting for the whole document. There's several instances where things start with number three and start of, instead of one, two, three. Um, and then it looks like there's some, like page eighteen of eighteen was for the entire document instead of actual page numbers. Um, and then it looks like there's some, like page eighteen of eighteen was for the entire document instead of actual page numbers. Um, and so, on, on the front page, that was my, my quick comment, but it really applies to the entire document. I would also, um, there's numerous instances in the document where there's callbacks to specific sections. Um, and those were off by a section last time, and I'm not so sure that every one of those got addressed. Be, because of the formatting that was done, so, um, anything else on the first page? Alright, second page. Which include item C and D definitions. Noting that we have.
Already noted my one question, that's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you, Rich.
Fourth page, which would be the last half of section D and, and section E three, but it's E one. There was a note that, uh, to define mining claim, right? You wanted mining claim added as a definition.
I'd appreciate it.
While we're on definitions, there's language in the back of this document that, uh, defines the nuisances being, having, i- being insecure in life. And I asked Megan about it twice, I think, so, and she says it's a legal definition. So then I took it upon myself to, uh, try to find a Google definition of what, claim, make someone insecure in life, and what, what does that mean? I still don't know, so I went, I went looking. Uh, and I can't report that I actually found anything other than it is used in, a thousand, hundred thousand documents across this country as a definition for nuisance. But I don't understand what that means. And I think I have some inkling of it based on some of the conversation that has happened here during this meeting, but, um, I would challenge Megan to define what insecure in life means. Cause you can define insecure, and is that indeed what's meant by that phrase? I don't know. Seems open-ended. Page five.
This is a point of, uh, we're actually changing the numbers at the bottom too, I assume.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're.
In your format.
So we're on really number four, number five.
I shouldn't mean to be picky, I'm sorry.
And number F, and letter F, excuse me.
We're at number five here?
Yes.
Okay, uh, water permit issued. All sizes of mining operations have to, provide a copy of a stormwater permit? All sizes?
Correct, yeah. If it's, if it goes over one acre or, uh, ten thousand square feet of disturbance, which most, I'd be shocked if there's a mining operation that doesn't go over ten thousand square feet, um. They'd have to get a stormwater permit through us as well as a, a DNR permit for stormwater disturbances as well.
Uh, then down on six, it talks about large scale, uh, you need to have a road and traffic impact study. Who does the road and impact study? Is there a form for that, or how does that work?
So they, they'd be working with, uh, county highway on, on that and as well as if, uh, the road, um, is a state highway, they'd have to work with, uh, state DOT on that as well.
Okay.
Uh, I asked, I asked Sean, um, Smith, who's the, the deputy director for the highway department, what he would like to see in the road and traffic impact study. Um, he didn't, uh, really have anything specific. That's why you'll see on six A, um, subsection five, any additional information required by the Pennington Ha- County Highway Department that would cover if they wanted any additional information. There, the highway department's gonna be the one who reviews it for safety, so it'd be their standards.
I'm gonna back up to.
Yeah.
Letter F, hard rock mining permit application. It says an incomplete application will result in denial of the permit. Don't, aren't things typically, so it would either be denied without purchase or continued to provide, excuse me, the supplemental information?
Uh, so I think what that's supposed to mean is that, and i- it should read that an incomplete application won't even, won't even be accepted by our office.
So I think we,
Yeah.
Will not be accepted.
Mister Chair.
Go ahead.
I have one on number four up on the top and, and I can't believe Megan used the word, the decision of the planning commission shall be a recommendation to the board. We've had conversation about that, but I think you gotta put continuance in there, is one of the possibilities. It's just saying once we're, it's before us, we've got to prove it, prove with conditions or deny it.
You're saying, I understand, I see what you're saying, it could be continued.
You gotta add a continuation as one of the possibilities. This, that's it, thank you.
I agree with that.
Six, six B, uh, talks about impact data. Uh, supplying all this information, is there a form that they have, or, or do they just? How do they figure that one out?
Sorry, I'll speak to some of the traffic impact studies, just so you have some clarification on it. Typically, these are hired out by consulting firms and it's a, a standard, um, process that they go through, um, to do a traffic impact study. They do them for all different kinds of type of businesses, and it's typically done by a consultant. So it isn't the applicant submitting this information or the highway department, it's done by consulting engineers that provide a document. It's usually a, a quite a long document. It shows a bunch of different, um, traffic areas, potential impacts, um, cross-sections, things like that, um. So we had one just for, recently for, uh, residential development, um, they hired a consultant, the consultant goes out and does those, so.
But my concern on this one is this was just a small scale, that's why I wondered how much information they really need for just a small scale.
Right, well, small scale isn't, you know, from this perspective, small, in some instances, so.
Um, so now I'm on letter G. General requirements for mining operations.
I just hit, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, B, uh, log details. Who's responsible for the log? Who's gonna keep it?
The blaster.
The blaster keeps those, those logs. So a, a lot of, so you have to be certified to blast. South Dakota does have a, a, a lot of certified blasters, so a lot of the, um, current companies who, who work, um, hire out or contract out for these blasters and these blasters keep the, keep the log.
So even though they don't work for them, they're gonna keep the log themselves wherever they are?
Correct, yes. I believe there's some state statutes on laws of how long a record has to be maintained.
Yeah, and just another clarification on this, I just remembered this from the aggregate mining. Um, we don't have a certification process in South Dakota for blasters, Wyoming does. And under their certification requirements, there's some record keeping and different things like that that they have to do to maintain their certification for blasters. Um, and as far as the aggregate industry, most of them that I know, um, especially with, uh, the crawl and, they hire everyone out of Wyoming that are actually certified.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So.
Good, thank you.
Mine's an easy one.
Go ahead.
Um, and it involves all of G, um, and you certainly read through all of G and you understand this, but I, I wonder whether we should make some reference to that these also apply after commencement of your permit. In other words, you could get your phone jingles and somebody's rattling your cage about your hours of operation, because the neighbors are unhappy or something after commencement of your permit, but that was just a question I put on there.
So, so you're talking about like after they, they start operating, having a, a contact for someone to contact?
I'm just saying so they're aware that this, this, these aren't written in concrete, uh, with your permit, they can be challenged after commencement of your.
Okay.
I'll leave that be, you guys decide.
My question is in G dot four, it says the operator, um, shall use industry best management practices in an effort to control and minimize fugitive dust. I agree with all of that, but I would put a period at that point, and then it's, because then it says including one of the following, landscapers and burns paved entrance roadways, and so either, I, I would, I would, say that they should follow the industry best management practices in an effort to, to control that. Um, but it, as it written, it says you're, you're required to do one of these things. And in my mind, someone may be required or should be doing all of those things. Um, and so I don't know, uh, I, I, I think, all of those things are, would be on the table by just leaving the, the period at fugitive dust, or, I think we should rewrite the second half of that that says, um, shall include, um, you know, applicable best management practices, um, similar to or, you know, proposed as these items or something like that. Does that make sense? As written?
It like including but not limited to?
Right, um, because as, as it's written, I think someone could just pick one of those and say, uh, you told me I had to include one and I'm only gonna do the one, and I would submit to you that mining operations probably do all of these, if not more.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mister Chair, uh, along that same exact one, um, I put down there whom decides. Um, I always understood that an ordinance has to refer to a specific document, like when you're bidding ASTM guidelines, those sort of things, so that people know best management practices dated such and such in all future, uh, ones. It should be quoted in here, I think, but.
Normally, well, normally in the plans that have come, come in front of us, these things are listed as things that they're going to do in their own operational plan.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, so, I don't wanna speak about a specific one, but the, the big one we've had in the past few years was, but, you know, there was a plan that details all of this. I just don't want this to say, you only gotta do one. Really, you should be doing what it takes.
Well, and one thing to consider too is most, I don't, I'm not even gonna say most, pretty much all of operations are gonna require a stormwater permit, and erosion sediment control and best management practices are required. Um, and what I always tell people, cause I'm the one who handles those permits, that if you're doing something and it, and it, it works for a while, but then it fails, you gotta do something else, um, so they can, they can change it.
Um, anything else in section, what is that, section G? Nothing, let's go to.
Uh, yeah, the next page, eighteen eighteen, uh, BB. BB record, uh, that is a log. That would be, it says the blaster shall make and keep seismograph record?
Yes.
Would that be a log?
That'd be, that'd be in their log as well, yes.
I wonder if we should, make that as a log, because we've got log details over here and over here you've got a record.
So you wanna change record to, to log?
Well, or something, just so one, you know, goes back to the other. Not like, if somebody looks at it and says, oh, I have to have a separate record, cause the other's a log.
Would you, would you like to, would you just wanna take that out of there and then put it into?
Well, you could have, you could have log, the blaster shall keep and says a F log, or, or something that effect, because he's already keeping a log over here on B.
How about this, the blaster shall ma- shall make and keep a seismograph, seismograph record, including both particle velocity and vibration frequency levels, for each blast in the log details.
Yep, something that alludes to it, yep.
Mister Chair, in G still yet, number nine, dumping prohibited. Uh, and we had a number of witnesses testify about this, not, shall not place junk material within or outside of the permit limit, nor, shall they allow junk material to accumulate because of dumping by others. I think we gotta reword that strongly because the outside, uh, nature of that, uh, and what constitutes, uh, dump, prohibited dumping, in other words, so, uh, we know there was a number of people testified about their concerns about allowing things to happen outside the permitted.
Empty lots. Like an empty lot type of thing?
Yeah, they buy another lot, they, they claim that some miners are buying other lots to, to dump stuff on.
Yep.
Okay. Um, anything else in section G? Going on to section H. I was curious how you came up with the two hundred feet for, from all exterior lot lines.
Uh, so, to be completely honest, that was in the original document that was written, and staff never changed it, so how that, number came about, I'm not, I'm not, Lawrence County, that's what Lawrence County has. Um, also in, in speaking with, uh, Mark, um, so he, he works at School of Mines now, but he was, he was a member of the mining industry, worked for several mining companies. Um, he said a lot of the, lot of the larger mining operations that you'll see, will actually buy up a, a huge section and create a, their own buffer themselves, cause they don't wanna have to deal with the headache of, of people complaining about things.
I would agree with, with your comment that, 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 that is, um, typi- that, that is a typical scenario that, that happens. Um, I believe in the aggregate, um, I believe in the aggregate chapter though, that instance was based on the allowable peak velocity for the ground vibrations. Um, and, and so it was based on the blasting. Um, and so I think in, in aggregate, it was fifty feet from the property, and the large-scale operations I don't think are, are the ones that I would be concerned about. It's the, um, it's the, the, the guy that has a, a single mining claim, and, and it has like a single load claim. Uh, I quickly checked online this morning and the load claim is, um, fifteen hundred by six hundred feet, so those are the, long slivers that we see sometimes in the hills. And if you were gonna say two hundred feet, then that means his mining claim is really only two hundred feet wide by eleven hundred feet long. Right? He's gotta come in two hundred on one side of his six hundred, and he's gotta come in two hundred on the other side, and he's left with this two hundred, foot sliver down the center. And, uh, I don't think that the two hundred feet thing is necessarily, um, as impactful, to, uh, large mining claims as the guy with a single mining claim, who is, who still has to come and get this. So, um, I, I guess I would ask that staff take a look at that and maybe talk with Mark and, and, and maybe Megan and, um, maybe there's, uh, a, a different application that can be.
Uh, so I guess they would have the option to go through, for like, a, a person like that to go through the variance requests, to go through the county board and get that.
That gets to my next question. Um, in section H, B, um, HBII, um, it says substantially diminish or impair property values within five hundred feet of the proposed area of disturbance. And this is not an easy one to, um, accept, I, I, but I, the question I, I would have would, how that would be determined. Um, and, uh, you know, how, i- if someone has a piece of property and a developer comes in and, picks some big huge corporate name, comes into Rapid City and buys up a bunch of property, they typically do that under the radar, right? Because they don't want the valuations to go up. Um, so, I, I just don't underst- this is always a really hard thing and it, and it doesn't even apply to mining, it applies to, everything where people are talking about their property values and what, if my next door neighbor does something, what, what it does, and so it's a larger question, but, how, what, what would be used to understand how that's, that would happen to substantially diminish or impair property values?
Mister Chair, I'm just speaking, uh, to me, it would have to be done by an independent appraisal that was South Dakota State certified.
Okay.
And that's probably what this would boil down to, if there was a challenge out there, they're gonna sit there and say, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to have an appraisal, and that appraiser's gonna have to be South Dakota State certified and certified in that area, uh, commercial, not residential. But if this went to a court and somebody claims that their, their property value is being dis- dis- uh, impacted, that's probably what the judge would, would, uh, one or two appraisals, I'm just throwing that out.
Okay.
It's getting kinda detailed, but that's what it would boil down to, I think.
So, oops, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Couldn't get settled between the property owner and the owner of the mine.
So, generally, what, what I would foresee happening would be that, any, anytime somebody comes with, to, to staff and says, this is, this would di- diminish my property, or someone says, well, this isn't gonna diminish, their property, um, it's kind of a, well, prove it, figure out, you, you come to us with the information, and then it'd be up to the board to decide if that information is, is relevant and valid to what they, they believe is gonna happen, so. If it's someone saying, well, it's not gonna decrease their value, they'd have to probably, they'd have to hire an appraiser or somebody who can make that determination. And if it was somebody who was saying, it's gonna lower my value, they'd probably have to hire someone to, to show that it is. Cause we go by, I, I, I believe we ask equalization too, on, on what their opinion is to get kind of a, a reference idea of what, for, for staff, like a baseline for staff, what would, what would happen.
Okay.
Yeah, in the past, sorry, Brittany Muller, Planning Director, in the past, we have consulted with equalization. to get somewhat of a baseline, to see, you know, what they have seen with similar industry or, and property values in the area. So we have consulted with equalization, just on a somewhat informal basis.
Mr. Chair, I think it goes to the exact point you made, there's a great de- degree of difference between a bigger operator and a smaller operator, and I'm not sure Pennington County residents are as happy about the smaller operator tends to operate on a more maverick basis, where a bigger operator has a greater degree of regulation to it. So, I, I concur with what you're saying, I'm just saying it can be either one of them, and, and when you get some of these little operators, they darn near could decrease your value, just from how they go about things. We have a number already in the hills that are questionable and are challenged on a regular basis of what they're doing.
I'm, I'm just thinking, the, the, you know, if there's, if you own a property, let's say you own some property and you, and you got it, you own it for several decades. And, and you've had a mining claim on it for twenty years or something like that, and you're a guy with this six hundred foot wide by fifteen hundred foot sliver, and you come in here and now all of a sudden your neighbors say, well, if you start mining on it, you're going to diminish my property value. And that, and that guy turns around and says, I've owned this for twenty years with, with the intent to do this. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm, these are really hard things for this board to navigate sometimes and, and in these conversations. So, I, I don't expect you to have the answer today. I'm simply throwing this out there as, how, how would this come up in the future, and, and how can, how can this ordinance document be written to evaluate those things, and maybe it's a stepped process where?
You know, I get the thinking, but that might be a little too specific. I think they're just saying, if, if you feel your property is being, your values are being diminished, then you have the right to retaliate. I don't know, I guess, you know, I got the thinking, that's probably what that, that's what would happen, but if that actually has to be in this document, I, I don't think so.
Okay.
So is there, is there a, a, a buffer of footage that you'd want us to look into, or do you just want us to look and see what industry standards would be?
I, well, to stay consistent, I think that, and the, this is me, I didn't cross check this this morning, but the, I believe that the distances in the aggregate were based off the scaled distances that had to do with the blasting. And, and that has to do with the, the particle velocities and, and the seismic monitoring, and then the, the decibel levels as well. So, those are, those are some things that i- in my mind directly affect the neighboring properties.
Item I, and under buffer zone waivers, also talks about injur- interfere with, interfere with existing land uses and enjoyment of other property. I mean, that's even more nebulous.
Yes. I think you just found the definition for insecure in life. I'm joking.
So, those go to the commissioners, and the commissioners have to decide if they can reduce the, the buffer. Or does it come to us first?
Chair.
We, anything else in section H? I talked a lot.
What about ten years for the first mining permit, and then five years for renewal? Is that a state thing, is where we got that?
Where, where are you? Are you in section H?
Yes. Four. Duration and renewal of hard rock.
You're in section J.
J.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
Yep, 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 nope.
I'm good with, I'm good with that. So we're on J four.
J four, yep. Someday I'll learn what to do. Anyhow, ten years is what we have for the initial mining permit, and then later we have five years for renewal. Is that standard?
Yeah, so, so, uh, speaking with Mark again, he, he has injury in, industry insight. Getting the, the county permit is the first step in, in any permitting. So before you get the state permit or the federal permit, you have to get our permit. And speaking with him, it can take an operation up to ten years, if not longer, to actually start commencing it. So we wanted, we wanted some sort of oversight in it, and we didn't want to make it too onerous on them, where they had to keep coming back. So that's why you see ten for that, but once they get re- actually going and starting on their permit and everything and operating, it'll be five years.
Makes sense, yep, thank you.
Anything else in section J? Anything else? Let's move to section K.
Mr. Chair, number six, it says section three twenty-one J, I think they mean K.
I'm in K, you said item six, K six. It says three twenty-one dash K, and you're saying it should be what?
J right now, and I think it should read K, for the number six.
I think it should read L.
So, I, I really edited wrong direction. No, this is, talk about the revocation of it, but I thought the actual complaint there was, they didn't take in the required corrective actions, that's why it didn't make it L. Yeah, I used it as a complaint, go ahead.
I'm with you, but that's a, that's a overall comment for the whole document.
Oh yeah, these, these just don't reference the right sections. But yeah, if, if they don't meet the requirements or the complaints, then a revocation hearing is scheduled, and that's L.
That's section L.
But number six refers to fail to perform or complete the required.
Right, then it would go to a revocation hearing. So if they don't do anything, then they would go to a revocation.
I'm right, K. If you read it, I'm going to stay where I was at, thank you.
I'm going to wait till the new draft comes out, then we'll, then we'll pick that argument back up. How about section L? Revocation of hard rock mining permit.
I just have Y, ten years.
Cody described why ten years.
Well, that was because of the basis, even if they haven't done anything, value to commence would include ten years, normal? I understood your definition of the ten years, but I didn't. In other words, couldn't we take a harder line and say if they don't get something going by three, we do, we use two years in our, or one year in our conditional use permit, can we do a tougher line, Cody?
We, we could. I'd want to look in, into that a little bit. We may be able to do something where you have to show progress over, you have to meet a certain.
Thank you, that's, that's all I'd be looking at.
Because sometimes, like especially on forest service land, when you have to do an environmental study and different things like that, it can, it can take a long time, and we, we don't want to necessarily punish them for trying to go through, through it. So I would say as long as they're, they're working towards it, I mean, that's something we could look into. That by a certain year, you have to apply for this or show a substantial reason why. Unable to accomplish that.
But could you have, for example, the staff will revisit, revisit this in two years or something, and at that time, then you would go through it?
So they come to the county, they get a, they get their mining, they, they, they get their mining permit, then they start hammering through the rest of the environmental assessments, those types of things. So they would come in two years later and say, we can't start yet, because we're still doing these other documents? Is that what you're saying?
The staff would see at that point, they would say, show us the documents, let's see if you're really doing it.
Right.
So one, one thing to consider with that is, you, you could leave the ten, you could leave the ten years in there, but as the planning commissioner, as the board, because the board will bring them as well, you can put a, a, a review time, you could say, I want to review it every year to figure out, as an update, you could do it every two years. So on and so forth, and then if you wanted to in the, in the revocation part of the, the mining ordinance, you can say if substantial progress hasn't been made to a, to get the permit, that you can terminate that permit anytime within that ten years. If that's the direction that the planning commissioner would like to go, I can make that change.
You could certainly tie somebody up in ten years, saying you're going to do something, and this is, you know, if you do that, we give you this or whatever, and ten years, nothing happens, and nobody gets anything.
I just didn't like the idea of our citizens sitting there waiting for ten years before, you know, before somebody pulls to the trigger. I think there ought to be some, some qualifications there. That was the only reason I brought it up.
Well, and, and as one of the conditions too, that you can put in those, some of them, actually, it's quite common in our conditional use permits, that anytime the planning commissioner or the board wants to review the permit, that you, you can put that condition in there. Or if there's a complaint from the public, that can be brought up.
You already have us in section J, it's called J three A, but it would be the first item within section J, where the county commission may at its discretion require the operator, require of the operator a written annual report, onsite review, or attendance at a county commission meeting, or all of the above, on each anniversary date of the approval of the conditional use permit. So, you already have the, the authority to request such thing, correct? Does that make sense?
That's it, then that.
So, and, and that one only goes to the board of commissioners, correct, that language, because it just says county commission? Would you like to add the planning commission in there as well?
Cody, could I ask Kevin, Kevin, if you were an adjacent property owner to one of these, what would the effect on real estate be over a ten year hold? In other words, somebody's got a right to sit there for ten years before.
Most people don't look down the road ten years. But, it, you know, if, if there was active stuff around there someplace, people are not going to be happy with that. You know, they're going to say.
I mean, potential buyers.
A potential buyer is going to say.
That's where I, my thought came from, is that you could have a difficulty selling your property when you're sitting alongside of somebody that hasn't taken an action.
Yep.
That's where I was going, thank you.
Definitely.
Section N? O? I had a question on O, it would be O six. So, this moves forward, all legal unconforming uses must be registered within Pennington County Planning within one hundred and eighty days of the effective date of section three twenty-one. So will you guys get like a list from the state of all of the current active ones, and then you send out letters, and they got to come in and come through, right?
Correct, that's what we did with the aggregate mining as well, all aggregate mining's had to.
So will all those come through here, or will, will that just be an administrative thing?
Nope, it'll come through, it'll come through. If we do it like aggregate, it went through the planning commission. That one didn't go through board, because that one, aggregate's not required for board. But it'll go through, because basically what that's going to do is set the permit limits. So that, it's a county held meeting, so that the public knows what their permit limits are, so if they go outside of the permit limits, and we, and Dwayne receives a complaint on it, we know what, what they've actually been permitted for.
Okay. But your guys' plan would be that you'd contact everybody?
We'll send a letter to them to, with an application to register their mining operation, and then once we receive those back, we'll set a meeting date for them.
Okay. Anything else in section? Oh. How about section P, enforcement?
I just had one, and I was going to defer to Megan. I didn't see anything about the South Dakota statutes in this one, but usually there's a delivery notice, location, and agent, and all sorts of things required in the enforcement side of it, and I just didn't see anything in here about, they just said to stop work order. And I thought, usually, South Dakota law somewhere says, okay, this person's got to be the person that receives it. So I would defer to Megan, but I think she'd want to.
No, that's a good question, because I, I think that there's always the, the permit applicant and the person responsible, and then I think that they have to provide a delivery address or something like that, right?
Generally, how we do stop work order is, for, for like stormwater permits and my stuff, we'll send a, a stop work order letter to the applicant, so the operator, and as well as the landowner. So we get both of the applicant and the landowner get a.
Can I throw in something? Some corporations, they have the right to make you notify an attorney, so he reviews it before it's acted upon. So, just, just the thought.
So, so generally, how, how we handle, and how I handle stuff on the environmental side, and I think Dwayne does the same thing, is those letters say to just contact us within ten days on a corrective action. So if you contact us and say that you have to have an attorney look at something, we'll give you some extra time to, to have that. We'll, we'll accommodate that. However, if you blow us off for three months, then, then we get a little more forceful.
My only comment in section P was under, oh, it's the very last sentence, where it says penalty set forth in section five fourteen of this ordinance. But section five fourteen is not in this ordinance.
So it should say Pennington County zoning ordinance.
Well, I, it, Pennington County zoning ordinance, and subject to the penalty set forth in section, yeah, five fourteen of the Pennington County ordinance, instead of this ordinance. Okay. Uh, item five is my definition that I don't understand. I just, I, in my mind, anyone could come up for anything, and say, well, this makes me insecure in life. Where, where do you live? I live in Connecticut. Oh. Oh. See what I'm saying? Completely ambiguous. I'll quit on that.
Just to back up and reinforce what you're saying, a lot of the, the, the South Dakota thing would say where the, the services got to be delivered to. In other words, which state is responsible for the action? So you just picked up Connecticut. Well, if the, the yes or no of this corporation that's running this mining permit is in Connecticut, it's going to be, have to be still somebody to get delivered South Dakota, if you want the action in South Dakota. I'm saying, I think Megan's going to want to look, tighten, tightening that up, so we've got the right person to talk to and get the action we need necessary.
Anything else on, in the ordinance?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Under definitions, I really think we ought to have a definition, definition of log, because that gets kind of confusing, we already talked about that, you got record, you got log. So blasting log, my guess is if there is a, a blast that didn't go right, and somebody wanted to go look at a, a log, well then, to me, under the definition of log, who's got the right to look at the log? Is it going to be digital or a hard copy? Is it going to be on a piece of paper, a, a notepad?
And where is it?
Where's the log going to be stored? How long does the log have to be kept? And, and who has the right to look at it? And, yeah, where's it going to be kept? I really think we need to define a little bit more what a log is, because I think it could be pretty critical if there was a lawsuit, and somebody wanted to look at a log, and an attorney said, I want, where's the log at? Where would you, so I think we need to expand on that just a little bit.
Well, and if the blaster's from Wyoming, where's, is he going to take it back with him to Wyoming?
Well, that's my question.
Yeah.
So, gen- generally, what I, I, I believe would happen is that if, if there's a complaint about something that happened with, with the blast, it would come through our department, our department would reach out to the, the operator to get that information on that blast, they'd have to send that information to us. And then technically, once we have that information, someone can fill out a records request to see, so it, it could be made public, and then they would just have to go through the proper channels.
It says the hard rock mining operation and activity shall comply with all local, state, and federal law rule and/or regulation pertaining to blasting activities upon request, the planning director. Upon request by the planning director, the operator shall provide access to the blasting logs to the county. And then below that, in section B, it talks about the log details. Name of the blaster, blast location, date, time, weather, diagram, number of holes, blast hole spacing, maximum holes per delay, maximum pounds of explosive per delay, depth, types of stemmed use, total pounds of explosive, distance to nearest habitable structure, not owned by the owner or the owner operator.
Well, that's why I was asking on Commissioner Lewis's question, if we just wanted to take, where it says record, and the blaster shall keep a seismic graph record, if we just want to add the seismic graph information into the log details? If that would, if that would.
I don't see that as, as an issue, you could also say that the, the log shall be kept onsite or something like that, it's. I don't see that as, as an issue. You could also say that the, the log shall be kept onsite or something like that. It's.
I mean, we can, we can leave the record part in there, but we could also put it into the log details. So it's concrete that that's what we want in there.
It seems like there's a little confusion what a record was and what a log was. And to me, a record is something that you find in a log. That's the way I interpret it.
So we could, we could define log and record. So there wouldn't be any confusion. We could throw a record in there as well.
Isn't my understanding that the peer controls the blasting licenses of people that are legally allowed to blast?
Who?
Peer. You know what I mean? South Dakota.
I'm still con- what, what's Peter?
So peer, like D A and R.
Yeah.
Oh.
Which, yeah.
So I think Peter. I think Brittany mentioned earlier.
That's my, that's my Chicago and South Dakota together.
Okay, peer. The people in peer. Yeah. I would say that, I think that there's ATF requirements for storage of blasting. There's, there's several other entities that are associated with that, but I, I don't know all of the details.
So South, South Dakota doesn't actually certify any blasters. Um, so like I believe Brittany used Wyoming as an example. Uh, Wyoming has a, a certification. But I believe actually for, for blasting purposes, um, I'd have to look into what the state requirements are for their mining permit to see what they would have. Um, but I'm guessing a lot of that might actually be federal regulations for.
I wondered, because I actually know some blasters and they, they've had their ticket pulled, so to speak, over small infractions. They can't, they would get a 30 day penalty or this sort of thing. Uh, yeah, and I was, I always thought it came from South Dakota to pull their card.
They, they could. We'd have, we'd have to look into it. I don't know if South Dakota and Wyoming have, I don't want to call it reciprocity, but some, some agreement that if, if you do a violation in South Dakota, that you're.
Well, I'm agreeing with Rich and, and, and Ron and, and Mike that then the records need to be kept and available, uh, somewhere. They, we, and we've got to designate whether we want them kept five years, seven years or whatever. You got to be pretty specific.
And one, one thing the planning commission can do and, and the board of commissioners as well is if you want to, um, I'm just using Croll as an example because they're the ones that I know blast on a regular basis because they, they email me. You, the, you could put a condition in any permit that anytime that there's a blast that those, the record or log for that blast is submitted to the planning department within two weeks of the blast. Um, so that way we have it on record in their file. So, so there is some policing in the, in the future on that.
Some of the mining outfits is, you know, Charlie, up your way, are not very stable. So if you say, keep the records with the, the mining company, two years they go out of business, boy, they're gone. That would be my concern. So what you're talking about coming into the county is, you know, a better, I would think a better thing.
Yeah. That's exactly why I bring it up because it's a better facet. When we say what it's going to be to hold them responsible for doing something. I agree, Mike.
Any other comments?
Uh, one more. Um, one of these emails that said it should clearly state that water, water reclamation plan be part of the reclamation plan. And they said it was not included. So relative to water, uh, what, uh, did we do any modifications to the ordinance?
Not on that. No, the state occupies the field on that. Um, they require a water reclamation plan in their, um, in their permit. So a lot of the information that they have to submit to, to the state, they have to submit to us as well. So like where it's talking about, uh, operation plan, the reclamation plan per SDCL 456B7. There's a list in that statute, there's a list of what they have to submit to the state. They have to submit that same thing to us. So we'll still have that information. We don't have anything specific to it though. We're just kind of hamstrung on what we can actually require because we don't have the a- authority to really say, well, the county doesn't like your water reclamation plan, but the state and the feds do. Then we're, we're put in a situation where the, the county doesn't really have the authority to occupy that field is making the decision based off.
But on a state and federal level, there are mechanisms in place to protect the water.
Correct. There's a, there's a lot of, there's the, um, EPA does a lot with it. The feds require a lot. Their Clean Water Act. There, there's a lot of things that people have to meet.
Anything else? With that, the recommendation from staff is to continue ordinance amendment OA 22 dash 01 to the 23rd, 2022, uh, planning commission meeting for additional comments or changes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to continue further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 16, county board report.
The county board report, the board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the April 11th meeting. With the exception of the comprehensive plan amendment 22 dash 04 and rezone 22 dash 04 for Black Hills Industrial Center LLC, KTM Design Solutions, uh, those two items were approved by the board. Um, there was a great deal of discussion on that. Um, the, um, owner and the developer did file a non-access easement along Lamb Road. Um, so there's only one access point that can be made on that. And I did verify with registered deeds that that actually was filed. Um, he did make that. You can't condition a rezon, but he did tell the board of commissioners he would do that and he did. So.
Questions?
So that will prevent any future development along there except for one small portion of that parcel until that road's brought up to standards. So.
Item 17 is items from the public, noting none. Item 18, items from staff.
Don't have anything.
Quick question. We do the, uh, for the comprehensive plan, we redo that. Then the next thing we go to the zoning after we've changed the comprehensive plan. Is there not some way that could be done in one move? Boy, seems labor intensive to have two separate.
Right. And they're two separate actions because they have to be because if you disapprove the comprehensive plan amendment, then the rezon would be illegal essentially because it's not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So if you deny or approve the comprehensive plan, that'll change the, could change the recommendation on the rezon.
That's all.
Items for membership. Good. All right. Item 20 is adjournment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, we got to work on that.
Yeah.
Motion in second for adjournment. Further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.